Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Okay, first item on our agenda this evening is approval of our agenda. Is there any changes or amendments, or can I have a motion for approval of the agenda as presented?
I make a motion.
Second to motion.
Motion and second.
Okay, five eyes, motion carries.
Okay, next item on our agenda this evening is the public comment on closed session. Is there any public comment on any of our closed session items? Seeing none, we have three closed, we have a closed session conference with legal counsel, conference of legal counsel on potential litigation, as well as conference of legal counsel on existing litigation, Mojave Pistachios LLC versus Indian Wells Valley Water District at Hall. We'll go on a journey into closed session, and we will return at 6:00 PM for our regular session. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and pull our session out of our closed session and back to our regular session. If I can ask everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Captain Tucker if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this great city of Ridgecrest where we live and cherish. Lord, pray for our country. Lord, give your wisdom to the leaders of our country. To take this country in the right direction, Lord, I pray for the city council. Lord, thank you for the opportunity you have given to us. Lord, may whatever we do be beneficial to this community, Lord. May we always put the interest of this community when we make decisions on this, sitting on this dice, Lord. Lord, be with us today. Bless each one of us that have come to this meeting, Lord. In Jesus' precious name I pray.
So we have one small change to our agenda this evening. We have guests that are with us in regards to item number seven on our agenda, which is a resolution of the city council authorizing the commencement of proceedings for the pool bond. They are here as our guests, so I'm going to do our report of the city attorney out of closed session, and then we're going to go ahead and move item number seven up on the agenda, so that our guests can go ahead and have an opportunity to present. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, only one report of action was taken by the council in closed session, and that is rejection of the Ariano claim. That rejection was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to go ahead and proceed with item number seven from our discussion items item. Number seven is a resolution of the city council, the city of Ridgecrest authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the proposed financing of capital improvements for the city, expressing its official intent regarding certain capital expenses to be reimbursed with proceeds of such proposed financing, and retaining a municipal advisor, bond council, disclosure council, and underwriter placement agent, and directing certain actions within actions with respect thereto. Cherie.
Good evening, council. The item before you tonight is the first step in getting everything together for the pool bond. We do have some guests, as you mentioned. We have Bud Levine and Brian Quint on the line, and then in front of us, we have Todd Smith. And so I will go ahead and turn it over to Bud, and he will begin the explanation.
Thank you, Cherie. As, by the way, excellent job on the staff report that you put together. I think it covers everything quite completely. Bud, the proceedings tonight are to pass a resolution to start the process for issuing the certificates of participation of 2024, which would fund the construction of the Aquatic Park Center. The COP structure that is going to be used is exactly the same structure that was used in 2018, when we did the COPs to pay off the unfunded pension liabilities of the city of Ridgecrest. And the same team that we're talking about using for this project was used for that project. We will come back to the, to the city council at a later date. We're going to be issuing, requesting the issuance of the bonds to go over the details of the structure in, in, in more complete detail, and also talk about the current market conditions at that time, to make estimates of what the financial debt service would look like at that time. Tonight, you're simply passing a resolution to start the process. It hires the financing team, that's the municipal advisor, which is Wolf Hansen. Underwriter placement agent is Hilltop Securities. Todd Smith is with you there tonight. Bond and disclosure council, Quentin Timick, Brian Quint, who's on the, the electronic feed. And by the way, all of the fees that are involved with, with those engagements are 100% contingent and are paid out of the completion of the, of the, of the financing. In addition, the, the resolution, in addition to indicating the intent to issue the project, also instructs the staff to work with the consultants and the financial team to put together the documents to bring back to you at the, at that later time. We're estimating that that would probably be sometime between April and May, depending on, could be as early as March, but depending on the schedule of when funds are going to be needed for the project. That'll determine when we start, continue the process to actually issue the bonds. I want to make sure you understand that the resolution does not commit the city to move forward with the financing. It preserves, it hires the team, gets the ball rolling, and it also preserves the right for the city to be reimbursed for any expenses that it expends for the benefit of the project prior to the issuance of the bonds. With the passage of this resolution tonight, you could go back 60 days from this date and go forward until the bonds are issued, and any funds that are spent for the benefit of the project out of the general fund would be then reimbursed. So if you could go to the next slide. Using the interest rates that exist right now, if this issue were to be put together as we envision, we would have a par amount of bonds of 12,790. You see that on the left. There would be a premium of roughly a million five. The premium, and I'll let Todd talk about that when he talks, is when you sell bonds at a higher value than the actual face amount of the interest rate, it produces additional funds. That lowers the amount of bonds that you need to issue and provides more money to spend for the project. So with that combination, we're, would anticipate, based on the numbers that we're seeing now, of approximately fourteen, a little over 14 million. That would be the sources of the funds for the project. Now, the uses of the funds would be roughly $14 million for the project itself. We're anticipating that the fund, that the bonds will carry a rating of A. We are hopeful we could get a higher rating, but let's assume a rating of A, and if we do get that, we would do just like we did with the COP in 2018. We would engage bond insurance to bring the, the value rating up to double A to get a lower interest rate. We would also have the insurance company provide a surety bond at a very de minimis cost for the debt service reserve fund. And, and then the cost of issuance would be estimated now at roughly 200,000, and the underwriters discount is estimated at 58,000. And there's your total source of funds, uses of funds rather, equaling the sources, sources of the funds. Now, that's the financing based on the interest rates that we are using as, as an example because of the current interest rates right now. We would assume a date of date for this, for this presentation, we assumed May 15th, but it could be May 15th, June, or, or maybe even a little earlier, but we're anticipating, let's use May 15th as a placeholder for the moment. It would, they would be 10-year bonds, 10-year COPs, I should say. The anticipated true interest cost on the COPs would come out with an average interest rate of 2.84%, very attractive. And the all-in true interest cost, which includes all of the fees and costs, would bring the rate up to a 3.20%, very attractive for this kind of market. We haven't seen these rates for a while. They're starting to show up now. You would then produce an annual, an average annual debt service of about a million six. That includes total interest costs of approximately 3.8, and total debt service of 16,500. These are all estimated, and will be brought back to you with actual firmer figures when we bring the bond documents and the resolution to actually issue back to the council sometime, probably in April. If you would look at the next page, this shows you what a typical debt service, based on these numbers that we're using tonight, would, would show. You can see the maturity dates on the left showing the 10-year term. You can see the principal amount that would be paid back every year. There's the interest coupon rate would be at 5%, but the actual interest rate, because of the fact that they would be sold at a premium, would range from a 3.13 out to a 2.81. You notice something interesting about this if you've looked at bond debt service schedules before, is that in a typical bond issue over the years, you would have lower interest rate in the early years with higher interest rate in the later years. That's called a normal yield curve. However, because we have an inverted yield curve right now, because the Fed is setting the rates for short-term borrowings at a much higher rate than the bond market is setting for lower, for, for longer-term bonds, you have the unusual circumstance where the early maturities are at a higher interest rate, the later maturities are at a, at a, a lower interest rate. And you can see the estimated interest that would be paid every year, and for the total, which equals the interest number that we showed on the other sheet of 3.8 million, and then again, the estimated total debt service. If you have any questions on that, maybe we could talk about that now, and then I'll turn it over to Todd to take you through the rest of the presentation. Okay, so Todd, you want?
Go ahead.
Yes, sure.
No, I'm saying we don't see any questions. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, terrific. Todd, why don't you talk a little bit about the market and bring us up to date on that, and about your approach to the marketing of the, of the, of the certificates?
Yep. Great, thank you, Bud, and good evening, everyone, and city council. Todd Smith with Hilltop Securities, and again, just to reiterate, our role here would be to act in the, as a placement agent or an underwriter in this transaction, so act as the initial purchaser of the bonds, and we remarket them to the public for resale. That public would be primarily, it's most likely for this particular transaction because it's, interest rates are out to 10 years, that the highest active investment activity right now is happening within 10 years of the yield curve right now, maturity curve. And so we're going to focus on SMA accounts, which are what we call professionally managed accounts, would be our, probably the direction where we're going to see most of the certificates of participation. We get, will get the most activity and orders, and so from that side. The market, I think, you know, again, we've seen a lot of volatility over the last couple of years, and interest rates obviously moved to higher rates with, with the Fed movements, and we've obviously started to see rates come down, you know, beginning around November of last year, and have carried into February. We had our most recent FOMC meeting, so the new headline right now is CPI is higher than anticipated, higher than projections, so it's caused the Fed chair and obviously the markets to say, okay, what do we expect to happen for the rest of 2024 in terms of rate cuts? And so prior to the last FOMC meeting in February, the market consensus was that there would be a 50% chance that there'd be a rate cut in March. That's off the table now. So the question is, is what's going to happen in May? And so the consensus, I think right now, is around a 30% chance that there'll be a rate cut, but they think that they're going to hold probably firm on that. But what does that really, you know, how does that translate to us in the municipal market? You know, generally, munis track treasuries and taxable rates, but a little bit different investor base, smaller investor base, and so I expect that we're going to be at the same levels that we just showed here of around a 284 right now. Rates hold firm, but again, we come back, we readdress where, you know, where markets are. They're always moving. Make, make the decision.
Is there any other comments from the presenters? Just double checking before I bring it back to council. So just wanted to state that this was vetted through finance previously, discussed at length, and all of our questions were, were addressed. Just going to go and address one thing just real quickly because of what I would expect a public comment to be, which is that the debt service runs past Measure P. We already have, part of the process of setting up the bond is to ensure that we have the sufficient funds to reserve in order to make sure that we can make those bond payments past Measure P. So we are cognizant of that in this process and in the planning. Beyond that, I think it's important to recognize that rates are in our favor right now when we talk about securing a bond, and I happen to be of the same opinion that I don't think we're going to see rates change that much. Politics of presidential year and high rates are, are an interesting batch of witches brew to see what happens. But I don't think we're going to see it change before, before May because CPIs are not adjusting nearly as rapidly as the Fed expected to see. With that said, I don't have any other questions. This has been fully vetted from my perspective. Is there any other questions from council before I open up, excuse me, to the public?
Nothing else from me.
No question, but this will come back to city council again after a couple of months, right?
Right.
For the, okay.
Yeah, this is not the issuance. This is the resolution to hire the firm and to secure our rights as it relates to the bond in terms of reimbursement and, and the next steps forward. It also is a first kind of clue to the public in terms of what our financing is looking like, what our cost is going to look like, and how much work has been done on the backend to fulfill that promise of the community pool. Thank you. Any other council comments?
None.
Is there any public comment?
When do we expect the, the final to decide what we're spending on the pool? Do we already issue a contract to build the pool?
No, we have not issued a, we should get an.
Yeah, we're currently in about 60% design of the pool. When the pool is full design, we'll have an engineer estimate, and we'll have a pretty good idea at that point in time when we put it out to bid, what the bids may come back at. But we'll know once we put it out to bid and we have acceptable bids that we receive, then we'll know what the cost is going to be.
Okay. I, I thought that was the answer, but I just didn't want, I was just curious about that.
Right, well, we're looking at issuing the bonds after we put it out to bids, and then we'll know exactly what the cost is, then we'll be able to figure out exactly what we need to bond for at that point in time.
Is there any premium to call the bonds?
There will be a call date on the bonds. I don't, I think it's five years?
Yeah, this, so this is something that obviously we will be discussing with regards to the optional redemption.
Can you ask a question?
Yeah, but to respond to the question, so typically, bond issues have what's, what we would see as a 10-year optional call protection. But again, to the extent that the city desires optionality and the ability to call bonds early, we can probably structure in a five- or a seven-year call without, without penalty. And again, part of this is, is that, you know, we market to investors that are less concerned about call provisions. Yes. Right.
Yeah, as, as your financial advisors, Bud, I would say that, that would be very positive, because normally, if you're going for a call earlier than, when you have a 10-year maturity, you're going for a five-year call, many times you have to pay a little penalty where you have to pay a higher interest rate. But I know Hilltop does a great job in their marketing, and if Todd says he thinks there's a good chance that we can do this, if you needed a call provision without penalty.
I don't think we're going to have a need to have a five-year call, because I think we're restructuring this to pay this off with the Measure P funds.
I, I didn't expect one. I was just, a question. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any on the phones? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any other final council comments?
Nothing else.
Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution of the city council, the city of Ridgecrest authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the proposed financing of capital improvements for the city?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your time. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen, and thank you to the public for allowing us to move that forward so that we could go ahead and let them get to their homes in a reasonable hour.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure being here. Thank you.
So we'll go back to our agenda now as it was originally published, and our next item is as soon as I get it in front of me. Okay, next item is presentations. This is, we have a Parks and Recreation update.
Good evening, council. So I wanted to come in front of you guys just to give you an update on what Parks and Recreation's been doing. I haven't been up here in a while, but we have been busy. So I just put together a little presentation just to kind of show you what we've been doing and the things that we've completed, also stuff that we're working on, and upcoming events. So first you'll see the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex. I have listed the completed projects. That includes fencing around the JV and Varsity Fields. This is just the outer part of the complex, those two lower fields. It's not one to divide the fields in the middle. We removed a bunch of tree stumps that were, had been there where trees were just chopped off dead, stumps left in the ground, so we've been doing tree stump removal. We also worked on two of the softball infield, which we had budgeted in the 24 budget. Due to timing with some things that happened, like the Hillary storm kind of put us behind on some stuff, so we didn't have time to get all three fields done. We will attempt to get all three done before the end of this fiscal year, otherwise it'll get done in the next fiscal year as soon as the softball season's over and we have nobody on the fields. But we did get three inches of infield mix taken out of the ground, so we dug down three inches and put brand-new in, reshot with the way the bases go and realigned the fields. Next is Pearson Park. As everybody knows, Pearson Park was, the grass was not in the greatest condition. The storm actually was a plus for us because it gave us the opportunity to get in and be able to reseed and top dress the grass area. The picture on the bottom is what the park looks like after us reseeding and us getting some really good growth. So I didn't include any pictures of how the grass looked before, but you could see the picture above is what the storm did to it. But there was, it was primarily dirt in that deep middle section of the grass lot that you see below.
Yeah, it looks amazing. I drive by there every day. It looks good in comparison.
Yeah. We also painted the benches after the storm. They had, needed to be painted for a while. While we had the park closed down for those couple months, it gave us the opportunity to fix some other things and clean up some stuff that we hadn't had a chance to really get to. We repaired play equipment. We had to fix some of the light fixtures as they were damaged from all of the rain, and did tree stump removal at that park as well. City Hall, so the top picture is the new Bowler lights that we have. I don't know if everybody noticed, it's a lot brighter out there when you go out at night. We replaced all 18 with LED lights. The benefit of this is it will increase safety at night, not only for the staff, but when we have public events outside of City Hall, it will provide that safety, and it's more visibility than we had before. We also replaced the public works door in the City Hall. That door was not securing properly, so we had everything replaced. That is the other picture that you see there. We also replaced a mini split in the IT booth back there in chambers. Next is the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex. So these are the projects that are under construction. The Clean California, we all know, is the huge project out there. Some of the things that are going to go in is a walking path, more trees, shrubs, plants that are drought tolerant, ADA improvements, drinking fountains, solar lights, shaded seating, and tennis court lighting. We also have two ARPA projects going on out there. One of them is resurfacing the tennis courts, which I forgot to actually add to the slide, and adding a bathroom concession building over between the two softball fields so that the softball side will actually have access to a bathroom that's closer to them. The tennis courts, we did go out to bid, we didn't receive any bids, so Travis, myself, and Ron have been looking into other options for resurfacing, and then we will resort to the purchasing policy, and we should be able to sole source based on what the attorney told Travis. I believe Travis is planning to bring the tennis courts back sometime in March, but that could change, I'm not sure yet. Next is Penny Pool. Penny Pool design is 60% complete. The 60% phase will include contract documents and specifications. We began yesterday, me, Ron, and my, Ron, myself, and Travis sat down, and we picked different fixtures that go in the bathroom, toilets, urinals, sinks, showers, that kind of stuff. In March, the three of us will be going down to Pasadena to sit with the design group and go over the plan documents page by page. So we are getting closer to the 100% complete design. We're still hoping for April 1st. Upcoming and continued projects, the Carmeggi Sports Complex, that is a ARPA project that's to put spectator seating shade over the football and baseball field sides. We also are going to be doing grass improvements out there. We plan on taking one field, we're planning on it being the Shetland Field, and working on the outfield, the grass, pretty much doing the same thing that we did at Pearson to see if it can work over at the baseball complex as well. We also plan to do some fence improvements on the back fence, that's, I'm not good with north, southeast, west, but in the back of the complex, to help with all of the sand and debris blowing in when it's windy.
Yeah, the west side.
Yes. Up John Park is the other one. We painted the gazebo. You can see that we will be working on the gazebo at Leroy Jackson. It's still a blue color and doesn't match everything else that's around. We, at Leroy Jackson, will also be working on grass improvements on the soccer fields. We plan on beginning this in March. We're going to do sections of the soccer field so that we do not put out all of the groups, including our own soft, our soccer program. So we're just going to do sections and move people around as necessary. We have the CDBG grant for FY 2223, which is to put skate park shade. That is an environmental as, as well as the shade over the dugouts for the spectator seating on the soccer, or the softball upperfield. So those projects are still moving along. CDBG, as we all know, takes a little bit longer than other funding. Next, just a highlight of our recreation programs and community events completed. We had our summer day camp program. Out of 55 spots, on average, we had 50 kids per week. That's a really good turnout. Back, before I was the director, we only took 28 kids in that program, so we've definitely almost doubled the size of that program. Trunk or treat, we had 3,000-plus visitors. Our tree lighting, which was an amazing event, was 5,000-plus visitors. Our winter camp program, we had 100% participation. That is a smaller program because we use our Carmeggi, our staff that work year-round to actually run that program, so we can only take a limited amount on that one. Our youth basketball program, we have 255 participants, and we're working on enrollment for our soccer program. This is our events and programs coming up. So our spring camp registration ends March 11th, and our dates are April 25th through 29th. This program, we also take 24 kids. Usually it's completely full as well. This will be our second year doing. Usually, it's completely full as well. This will be our second year doing it. Our youth soccer registration ends February 26th, and our season will run April 1st through June 16th. We have our next Freedom Park movie night coming up, March 22nd. Now that it's warming up, we'll be having movie nights again. And our summer day camp program, we are taking registration also. The program runs June 3rd through August 2nd. And also keep an eye out. My staff and I have been planning some new teen events that we haven't done before and some family events, so we'll have more of that information listed in our brochure. And the next page I just included for people to get information, or know where to get information regarding our programs and activities that we have going on. Any questions?
No questions, just a quick comment. Thank you for doing this presentation. I, the community interfaces a lot with you, so I think that keeping them up to date is great. Appreciate it.
I have no questions, obviously. I'm excited by seeing the list of things, so. This is years of fruition, years of planning coming into fruition right now, so. Okay, I don't see any other council comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate sharing with the public and with ourselves. And keep up the good work. We got a lot going. Next is public comment. Public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not act on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked by his or her name, and do I have any public comment from the floor?
First, if I may, I'm going to walk up here so she can hand these out. Ronald Porter. I brought you all a copy of the California Constitution and the United States Constitution, current ones. Reason I step up is because the primary factor of our government bodies in this country is to protect a person's liberty. And before anything's done regarding something, that has to be the highest priority. When you think something's good, doesn't mean that it's appropriate to take away liberty for that purpose. And the courts have put very strict, very strict restrictions on, on government bodies doing that. When you want to do something to take away, to give something one man wants, you're taking away liberty from another man. And it's something we have to start paying more and more attention to because it's going away daily. And when you do, make your actions and your questions and your laws, that's a primary concern. There's some things on the agenda tonight regarding ordinances on zoning. That's really personal property, and before you go move into things like this, do I really need to restrict this, gentlemen? How is it really harming public safety? And just public safety alone is not enough to justify an action. That's the reason I brought it. I expect you to, to use it, look at it, and we're referring to it more and more all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank Mr. Porter.
Is there any other public comment from the floor? Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, I usually try to give a second to see if somebody's calling in. I'm going to guess Mr. Porter has something else he'd like to share with us. No, that's okay, sir. I don't mind. You, you, you did not use your time.
He reminded me of something. The last couple of times I was watching and I couldn't comment, there was a delay on what came over YouTube, and I miscomment twice. I just wanted you to know. I was going to call and let you know, and I just simply forgot.
That's why we're trying to give that little pause in between there for just that reason, sir. We're trying to make sure that we don't.
Well, I was two minutes behind last time.
Oh.
Yes. So when I called, they says, oh, they already adjourned. So just to let you know, it was delayed.
Thank you for, thank you for alerting us. We are trying to make sure that we give opportunity. Again, I don't believe there are any callers on the phone. We'll go ahead and move forward with closing public comment. Our next item on the agenda this evening is council announcements or direction. I'll begin with Mr. Blades. Any council announcements?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Raj Rottman? Doc? And Mr. Gorman?
Saturday, this coming Saturday, the city block party, as I call it, includes a chili cook-off. I don't know if everyone's aware of that. We, the council has a booth, and we'll take our shot at chili. And you're all invited to stop by. You get to, you get a little taste, if you buy a red bracelet, I think, of everybody's chili. There'll be eight, I believe, different chili booths, and ours will be the best, but you gotta decide on your own about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. The only other one I had is I just want to thank the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce. They are currently at their speakers' reception for our Economic Outlook Conference. That's going on right now, and I apologize that none of our council was able to be present. That's called scheduling, and it, they conflicted, but tomorrow morning, city leadership as well as community leaders will be joining here at Kermit Gueye for the Economic Outlook Conference, and I look forward to hearing and sharing with all of you all the exciting things that we've been doing. Next item is our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, if comment or discussion is desired by anyone. The item will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I'll read the two consent items for this evening. First is our proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting date of February 7th, 2024. And second is approval of the loan payoff and release of promissory note and covenant for the High Desert Haven project. Is there any member of the council which wishes to have an item pulled?
Mayor, before you proceed, if I may.
Yes, sir.
On item three, we have a amended attachment that is in front of you, which we would like to include to the, and replace the one that is currently in agenda packet. There was just some wording that was different in the recording document. Does not need to be pulled, does not need to be done anything. I just want to advise the council and the, and the public, and we have the items available for the public should they desire to see it. Thank you.
Understand, and thank you, sir. With that said, is there any member of the council who wishes to have an item pulled? Is there any member of the public who wishes to have an item pulled?
Given the changes and additions to the sync calendar, I motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second for approval of the consent calendar as presented with the amended.
Please vote. We have five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our discussion and action items. The first action item is item number four. This is discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman?
Thank you, Mayor. So the board did meet last week, and we had a rather short meeting, but I will go over some of the highlights. So the one agenda item we had was agenda item number nine, Resolution 2-24 authorizing a reimbursement agreement with AVAC. So I think as everybody knows, there's a Sustainable Groundwater Management Act grant of $7.6 million that has been provided to, for the design and planning of the inter groundwater, or the imported water interconnect project. And so that will bring water in from, imported water from Antelope Valley Eastern region into the Indian Wells Valley. And so Antelope Valley, or it's, we call it AVAC, but it's at Antelope Valley Eastern Agency. They will be doing a scoping review and looking at how the pipeline will interface with their water supplies and in AVAC. And so the, this resolution pertained to providing $75,000 for their, the cost of them providing the services and the scoping review. And so it was approved by the board by a vote of three, with the Water District voting a no on it. And so that was our only agenda item. There were a few other items I'll go over that I thought were of interest to everyone. One dealt with the urban community drought relief program. This fell under the Water Resource Managers report. So the Groundwater Authority has been awarded $3,345,000 to consolidate shallow well systems into a public water system. The DWR has executed the grant agreement. A meeting with the Indian Wells Valley Water District is being set to coordinate on potential consolidations, and the first invoice in progress report's due on 5/30/24. So they'll begin work on that, working with the Indian Wells Valley Water District on the consolidation. And they're, once they have a little more planning put together, then they're going to report back, which I'll bring back to the council to, to share with you. Let's see, what else do we have? That was really about it. There's ongoing work in regards to the second well drilling. So the, currently there's a process and cooperative agreement modification for time extension requested through 2024 to complete the permitting and drilling of the second monitoring well up north. This deals with the Rose Valley wells that are being drilled. There's one that's, has been drilled, but the other one, they ran into problems with the, the drill site, and so they're still pursuing that and just have a little bit more administrative stuff to, to work through. And, and I believe that's it. So if anybody has any questions, I'm open to questions.
Is there any member of the council that has any questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there any member of the public that has any comment?
Ronald Porter, I, I didn't quite understand what you said. You said there's a $7 million grant? Is that something you're trying to obtain, or they got?
No, no. The Sigma Grant was a grant that has already been provided for the planning and design of the interconnect imported water project.
I thought that you said, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. Item number five is appointment of a city council member to the local agency formation commission. Ms. Charlon?
Yes, sir. The commission has a rotation among the cities in Kern County, and our turn has come up where we will have someone that will sit as a four-year term starting in May. And I've been sending you guys some information and some websites so you can do some research. And at this time, we would like to entertain a nominee to take the seat on the commission, and then we'll just approve it by a minute motion.
I think given the, like the gravity of what goes on with LAFCO and the amount of, amount of stuff that the city council is championing, I'm going to, like to nominate the mayor. And over to the rest of the council if you agree or not.
I, I'm certainly, I believe that with the annexation with the hospital, with the things that are coming up, I'm certainly more than willing to step into that role.
Thank you. I think that they meet once a month?
Yes.
They meet once a month, and it looks like it's going to conflict with potentially the council meetings. But what we would try to accomplish is our council meetings begin, and Ms. Charlon, please step in here if I, if I speak out of improperly. The meetings for them start at 5:00 PM. The meetings for us start at 6:00. We can participate via Zoom for, what is it, about half of the meetings, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They start at 5:15.
Huh?
They start at 5:15.
And so in those cases, it's very possible that either I may not be able to attend a close session, or we may not be able to set a close session for those dates, and I should be able to come over. Those meetings are not typically long meetings because typically most of the discussion points or, or issues to be addressed by LAFCO have already been discussed in advance of the meeting. And so there could be some circumstances in which the vice mayor may, or mayor president may have to run the meeting for the first initial in those cases, and there may be some cases in which I miss because I will be in attendance at the LAFCO meeting.
Oh, that really works. I, I comment, I really appreciate you stepping forward to do that. We couldn't be better represented, and we wouldn't miss you then for half of our city council meetings entirely.
I, I hope to minimize my absence as much as possible.
Thanks.
So I'll just add that, yes, I'm in 100% support of the mayor accepting this position. I think it's a very important position for the city to be on this LAFCO board and be represented. If I understood the, the information that we were given, this opportunity rotates out amongst the other cities, and it's years before we come back into queue again.
Yes.
And so, and I think that's, you know, makes it even more important for us to, to be there and to have our voice heard. Do you know that, will you be serving on committees too? Do they have committees within the, within that?
To my knowledge, no.
I was trying to make sense of the data that, you know, that they provided us, but.
We don't, I, I've not been advised of any specifically committee assignments. The rotational schedule will have us with an appointee at this time, and then I believe it's two years from now. We will get a second appointee in the alternate role.
And that was my next question was, when they were referring to alternate, they weren't referring to you having to provide an alternate to your position?
Not at this time, but we would actually end up with a second alternate seat.
Okay.
So we would have the regular seat assigned to the City of Ridgecrest and therefore appointed to myself. And then two years from now, at that point in time, we would have the opportunity to appoint another council member to sit as the alternate to LAFCO, not as an alternate to me, but an alternate for the absence of any other member.
Correct.
Exactly. Yep, that's how I understood it. So I think it's going to be a very interesting organization to sit on that board, and so I wish you well on that, and I think you'll find it probably worthwhile.
And I think it's important for the public to understand that we have at least two, two things that we have been actively working on as a community that will likely be arriving at LAFCO. I kind of, when I, when I first read LAFCO, I don't know how many people you remember the Pelican brief, a very famous John Grisham novel, movie, that talked about planning the Supreme Court by, by knowing when a brief was going to get to the Supreme Court. So they assassinated two judges in order to make sure that there was enough time for them to place the right people in place for the brief when it got there. No, this is what the story is. And, and I know it's a terrible concept, but what I'm trying to say is we've got at least two issues, which is first, the HR, God, I wish I knew the number off the top of my head. I might kick myself because I needed to have it off the tongue by DC. 1665, I think it is, the Ridgecrest land, the land annexation bill, which would then, if approved by Congress, would then come back to LAFCO for additional approvals. And secondarily, the efforts of Ridgecrest Regional Hospital to potentially join the East Kern Healthcare District, which would also go through LAFCO. These are two critical issues to our community that I want to make sure that we have the representation present. And, and I'm not saying we're trying to plant the board, but I'm saying this is the right opportunity for us to be taking strong positions in, in regards to those.
And the goal would be for mayor, or whoever the appointee is, is to watch the Zooms here upstairs so that as soon as it's over, it could just come right down. So we'll set them up upstairs.
I'll be in conference room B while you guys start and swing over as soon as it's over.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there, there's one way of working around this. We could pass a resolution that would, would modify our council schedule on those nights versus start a half hour later, and we could also move close session to the end. So I don't think your participation in councils can be that effective. We're just going to have to be a little bit flexible on our schedule to be able to accommodate that.
Except for the meetings that are specifically in person. I understand there are some that are in person.
There are some that, yeah, you do have to go over to.
And those ones, I'll just be absent from. I, I have great, incredible faith in my, in our wonderful council, so.
The other option is, once they seat a new board, generally they will talk to the members and say, does anybody have a conflict? Should we move the meeting nights? So that's a possibility too, that they'll have that conversation over there, and they could potentially not even conflict.
Understood.
Great.
Yep.
So do we need to make any changes as with the Brown Act, if you are changing the timing to 6:00 to 6:30?
No. The municipal code says that the meetings will start at 6:00, so if we end up doing a change of times, we can just do a call, a special meeting for that time, like we do the close session.
Or just amend it?
I meant the code for the period of time to set.
Another option.
To set a new time as a regular meeting.
The key is there's options for.
There are limitations.
We can find options for.
Yeah. There are limitations in what you can do in special meetings, so I would not want to have a special meeting once a month because it would limit the, the things that we can accomplish.
Correct.
Understood. But I am more than happy to serve the city in this capacity.
Yeah, so we'll just take a motion and vote. Yeah, so we'll just take a motion and vote.
Make a motion to approve Mayor Bruin being appointed to LAFCO.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Blades?
Hold on. Absolutely, he has got every right for public comment, sir. Absolutely, sir.
I have a question, that comes up.
Oh. You have a right to be heard.
Well, the way I read it is a four-year appointment?
Yes, sir.
Is it, does the person on the appointment have to be on the council?
Yes.
Yes.
So if someone leaves, they just have to make another appointment at that time?
That would be correct, sir.
I just, and can anyone give me a brief explanation of what the stuff that this commission covers?
Local area formation is, so, for example, our land annexation, so if the city of Ridgecrest would want to change its boundaries, its city's boundaries, so it goes to this group, which is the local agency for Kern County, for the formation of the cities and organizations that represent inside Kern County. And we go to that group for the approval of the change within our borders or boundaries. Similarly, East Kern Healthcare District, which is a local agency, would go to them for the addition of additional areas to their charter.
Okay, I understand that part, but do they report to the county? I mean, what authority do they have? If they, I mean, if you don't approve it, what authority does this board have?
LAFCO is an entity that is formed by state law. Every county has a LAFCO commission.
Okay, I can look that up then. Thank you.
Yeah, they basically actually don't have much of oversight. They are the deciding body.
More or less the suggestion body? More or less a suggestion body?
What kind of body?
Suggestion.
No, more than authority body.
No, they are necessary in any, their decision, this approval is necessary in any boundary adjustments or service changes within the county.
So if they want to change something in the city, and none of the other people on the board want to approve it, we can't do it?
You cannot proceed with an adjustment of a boundary without LAFCO approval.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
In other words, it's unconstitutional.
Okay. Now, we have, there was a motion, and the second, I do apologize, I wanted to make sure there was opt-in for public comment. You can call, roll call.
I am. Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajarajan?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Fantastic. Next item is item number six. This is authorization to enter into a two-year agreement with Flock Safety Incorporated, not to exceed $80,000 for fiscal year '24, and not to exceed $72,000 for fiscal year '25 for automated license plate reader cameras, ALPRs. Captain Tucker.
Sergeant Groves.
And Sergeant Groves, if I may, just one more time. Thank you, sir, for leading those two town hall meetings. I believe that we did a great job of getting the information out to public that was able to participate and really answered a lot of questions, so thank you, sir, for doing those.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing us out today. We're here to request authorization to enter into a two-year agreement with Flock Safety Incorporated, not to exceed $80,000 for FY '24, and not to exceed $72,000 for FY '25 for the automated license plate reader cameras, also known as ALPRs. We're requesting city council approve as presented, authorization to enter into the two-year agreement with Flock Safety, not to exceed the $80,000 for FY '24, and not to exceed the $72,000 for FY '25 for the ALPRs, and to issue a final approval for the previous allocated fund in FY '24 budget. The Ridgecrest Police Department mission statement is our purpose is to form a lasting and mutually rewarding partnership with our community based on respect and sincerity. Our mission is to provide loyal, fair, and ethical police services that actively prevent crime, reduce fear, and enhance the safety of citizens through community policing. The Ridgecrest Police Department strives to leverage technology and innovative ways to effectively provide police services to the community. The Ridgecrest Police Department Investigations Bureau sought a crime prevention and reaction program, which would implement technology with real-time data to bring new investigative tools to assist with solving crimes in the community. One of the solutions located was Flock Safety Incorporated Automated License Plate Reader Camera System, ALPRs. They have been used by many law enforcement agencies around the country to deter crime and further investigations, providing results of apprehensions of the most dangerous criminals and the recovery of children who have been abducted. Flock Safety, Inc., ALPRs objectively capture vehicle license plates and associate vehicle characteristics, not people or faces. The ALPRs are used to prevent crime by sending real-time alerts to law enforcement when a stolen vehicle or a vehicle associated to a wanted suspect has been detected within a city. ALPRs send real-time alerts when vehicles associated to abducted or missing persons are detected, amber or silver alerts, providing law enforcement the ability to react quickly. ALPRs also allow investigators to search for vehicle characteristics described by victims and during the timeframe the crime occurred. ALPRs support law enforcement in conducting criminal investigations by providing critical information that will generate almost immediate, actionable leads, leads that can result in quick apprehension and the recovery of crucial evidence. Over the past six months, Ridgecrest Police Department Investigations Bureau has worked with Flock Safety Incorporated representatives to examine the benefits of implementing ALPRs in the city of Ridgecrest and locations throughout the city to provide the best benefit for crime deterrents and investigations. Staff has conducted two town hall meetings for discussion and feedback from community members. As a result of these meetings, concern was voiced in regards to facial recognition technology being used and the privacy of information stored. To address these concerns, it is confirmed facial recognition is not part of the ALPR implementation, nor an investigative tool sought after. Additionally, all information captured and stored from the ALPRs will be the sole property of the Ridgecrest Police Department and stored on encrypted databases. In accordance with California Senate Bill 34, the Ridgecrest Police Department will implement specific policy for ALPRs, which restricts local law enforcement on sharing ALPR data with any federal agency or agencies outside the state of California. Additionally, information collected from the ALPRs is restricted for use to only state, local, and county agencies within the state of California if approved by the Ridgecrest Police Department. The implementation of ALPRs also allows the Ridgecrest Police Department to join a network of ALPRs, which have been implemented by other Kern County law enforcement agencies and neighboring counties' law enforcement agencies. After careful examination of the city of Ridgecrest's geographical location and roadways, Flock Safety Incorporated representatives provided a quote for the implementation of 24 ALPRs, which would be strategically located throughout city limits. The amount of ALPRs could increase or decrease based upon the final determination of the ALPRs' locations, which could affect installation cost. As part of the subscription to Flock Safety Incorporated, they're responsible for the installation and maintenance of the equipment. The ALPRs will be mounted based upon the suggested camera locations. The quote provided reflected five cameras would be installed on Flock Safety Incorporated installed poles, and 19 would be installed on pre-existing infrastructure poles. The Flock Safety Incorporated subscription and contract requires a 24-month lease subscription term with the first year including the lease, subscription, implementation costs of $78,100, and the second-year lease subscription costing $72,000. There are no penalties for non-renewal at the conclusion of the two-year lease subscription term. We're recommending the council approve the authorization to enter into a two-year agreement with Flock Safety Incorporated, not to exceed $80,000 for FY '24 budget, and not to exceed $72,000 for FY '25 budget for automated license plate reader cameras, and to issue a final approval for the previous allocated fund and FY '24 budget. The fiscal impact to the FY '24 budget is $80,000, and the fiscal impact to the FY '25 budget will be $72,000. We're requesting approval for this.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and start with some council comments. I just have one, and I'm just going to get out of the way real quickly. Mr. Reed, the poles that they are proposing to install, I would assume that our Public Works Department would work with them to ensure wind resistance and those things of that nature, correct? I did that intentionally while you were eating, just for the record. Okay. Just was, because that was, instantly, when I saw somebody else coming in to put a pole in, and if they don't know our wind conditions, pole goes up, pole goes down. I could see that happening instantly. That was my only question. I will go and pass it to Mr. Gorman. Any questions?
Not particularly questions. I'm pleased to see this come up when it did. I'm pleased that you were so forthcoming with descriptions and answering my questions. I'm not compromising any of my normally conservative beliefs about constitutional rights. I think this will help, the efficiencies of what you guys do. And I support it.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hayman?
So I just have a couple of questions pertaining to, and some of this was answered, you know, back when we had the town halls, so I just want to confer on data storage, the length of time that the data is stored.
I'll defer these questions to Sergeant Groves on the data storage.
So with Flock Safety, I believe it's 30 days is the max storage that they have.
Do you feel like the PD's implementation of it will use the 30 days, or will you have your own set timeframe?
I think we would probably defer to the Lexipool policy, but we would leave it at the 30 days. I think California state law allows for up to 60, however, Flock Safety Incorporated limits it at 30 for California.
30 days, okay. And then, as far as the data being shared, so in the report here, it states that it won't be shared with federal and other agencies outside the state of California, but will it be openly shared with agencies within the state of California, or only upon request for a specific incident, or, you know, a crime, or whatever, that instigates them to want?
Our hope would be that if we have that reciprocity between state agencies, that we would be able to access theirs as well as they would access ours.
In other states?
Not other states, solely California agencies. And no federal agencies, nothing outside of California.
And then, so the only concerns I, you know, that I have is that, not particularly with RPD, but in the public eye, you know, there's worry of data being shared, you know, from other agencies, and so in here, you state that we'll, that the police department will implement specific policy for the ALPRs. And so when do you anticipate having that implementation policy?
So the Lexipool, our policy program that we use, it's used statewide, it has predetermined policies in there, and then, once we get the go-ahead to get the camera system, if it's approved, we would sit down and we would edit that to fit what our specific intentions are, and within what the city has decided. Most agencies have the same type of policies in place, so we would have, the only thing different, I believe, some agencies store their data for 60 days, but we would only be storing it for 30.
The policy would be in place before the flock system would be active.
Right, that's what I had anticipated. And so, because that's, out in the public, you know, there's concerns with that because there are other agencies that don't have a policy set, and so there's legislation, you know, out there to, that's being, you know, put out through the legislative process to enforce, you know, I guess you could say enforce our set guidelines, you know, to, you know, so I'd like to see our PD be, you know, proactive and preemptive in that, and so we fall within, you know, those guidelines and don't have to worry about that concern down the road.
Yes, sir. The new law does mandate all departments or agencies using it to have the policies in place for those specific reasons.
Well, I mean, I had my concerns, because, you know, when you look at, you know, surveillance, it's a form of surveillance, but when you look at the benefits of it, I think that it's a true benefit, you know, to the police department, to the community, and like I mentioned to Officer Groves about, you know, cases in town here where, you know, it was cameras that people protect their residences from, and that really stuck home with me, is that, you know, we, I personally feel like that's a benefit, you know, if you have cameras and you can catch somebody, you know, either attempting to get into your place, or they've already committed the crime, and you can use it to solve the crime. I look at it as the city's way of being able to protect us, you know, on the bigger picture. So I appreciate you guys having the town halls, like the mayor, you know, had brought up earlier. I think it was very beneficial for people like myself who have, you know, concerns, and I'm definitely in favor of what, you know, of Flock, and I hope it's a success for the city as a whole.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Rajarajan?
As my fellow council member said, most of my concerns were addressed in the briefing which you did and also on the town hall meetings. I totally understand the need for the ALPRs. Definitely, it is going to reduce the crime, it is going to curtail the crime, and it will help us to brace the criminals who are on the run. On the other side, it's like having a police officer at the intersection of our city, every intersection of our city, and then being there all day, every day, and taking pictures of my license plate. So we need to weigh the advantages and disadvantages. I think the advantages are more when compared to the privacy issues expressed by most of the citizens. So it boils down to freedom of privacy versus fighting the crime. So my, the main question I have been facing from public is, how are we going to ensure the privacy of our citizens by using these ALPRs? If you can say something about that, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely. As far as the privacy of the citizens goes, it's, there'll be a policy in place that just to access the search database for flock systems, there has to be an actual, ongoing criminal investigation. So it wouldn't be something that any officer could access it just to see what was going on. There has to be a reason for a search, and it has to be an active criminal investigation to even begin the search process. So the officers are going to be investigating something to even look up what to search for. So I'm hoping that, you know, the citizens of Ridgecrest kind of take solace in that as well, that they're not accessed all the time, and there are specific reasons of the when and the how you can access it.
Okay. And another question is, you were mentioning you'll have the data stored for 30 days. So why do we need to keep it for 30 days? I mean, we'll be able to find out if he is a criminal or not within 24 hours. So can we not delete the data after, say, one or two days?
Theoretically, we could, yes. The reason we keep it for 30 days and why that's beneficial is, is if you go out of town and you're gone for two weeks on a trip or something like that, and you come back and you find that your house was burglarized and your Ring camera caught motion at a certain time and there was no suspect vehicle, we could conduct a search based around that timeframe, as long as within that 30 days, where we could still generate leads. Whereas, right now, the way it stands is, if we don't have, we might be able to establish a timeline of when a theft occurred due to an alarm call or something to that effect. However, without any actionable leads from any other source, it's difficult to identify a suspect. This will at least give us another avenue to develop these actionable leads to work on solving cases that may have happened and they're just late-reported.
And how accurate are these readings? I mean, is it just taking a picture of the license plate, or does it read the letters and digits and store in an encrypted form, or how does this work? Any idea?
So that would probably be a question I would defer to our flock representatives, which we do have on, we do have here. I know as far as accuracy goes, they're fairly accurate, I mean, in the 90 percentiles, for sure.
This is Hector, happy to answer.
Go ahead, Hector.
Good evening to the council and to the community. Council member, the way that we measure accuracy is on a footage-by-footage basis. So every single picture that officers search for has an accuracy percentage provided. If it dips below 95%, they'll have a caution symbol next to it. But in every single case, your department's policy is to verify that alert, right? So there is still a human component that is necessary, as with everything. In addition to that, there was another portion of the question was kind of, what does the machine learning capture? I mean, it captures both the license plates, right, so the alphanumeric... I mean, it captures both the license plates, right, so the alphanumeric portion as well as what we call the vehicle fingerprint. So that's going to be, is it a red Honda? Is it a black Toyota, for example? So all of the descriptors that are associated with the vehicle itself.
Mr. Wildes, are there any cases where a wrong person was arrested because of ALPRs?
There's no cases that we know of through Flock. Of course, this is, it is important to note, this is an investigative tool, right? So this is not in and of itself, you know, what is used for an arrest. There's many factors that your police department, as part of constitutional policing, will undergo or undertake to, you know, kind of go through an investigation.
Last question, maybe it's for Public Works Director. So does this need permitting and all? So who takes care of the permitting for installing these things?
We can answer that. Flock takes care of the permitting. They work with the local jurisdictional agencies and make sure that the permit is completed before they complete the installs.
Thank you. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions, mostly for the benefit of the public. You answered a lot of the stuff that I had on my mind throughout both of the town halls. I appreciate those, they were very informative. You stuck around afterwards, answered questions of the public, which was huge. So before I address you guys, I want to go just straight to the top. Ask Martin, in your assessment for the city, is there anything unconstitutional about the implementation of Flock?
No. It's an investigative tool. It captures an image, which is a public image. License plate is on the front and back of the car. That's something, as council member observed, it basically substitutes for an officer who could be sitting at a corner and taking pictures of a car that goes by, sending him to a computer and seeing if there's anything that, you know, these are. So, no, to answer your question briefly, no.
Thank you. No, that's good. City Manager Strand, we're, for this to be budgeted in, are you, did you already wedge for this? Are we okay for this?
Yeah, remember during the budget process, we already budgeted funds for the initiation of the Flock program. And we held off until we were able to get enough information and the town hall meetings to be able to come back to council with an actual project for them. And of course, anticipation would be is if you approve it tonight, we'll be putting it in FY '25 budget.
Thank you. Not to get too far down the OPSEC rabbit hole, but would you mind walking us through how Flock is used, like how the average police officer would use Flock?
Yes, sir. So that, when a crime happens and somebody reports that a crime happens, or even a missing person, doesn't always have to be a crime, but for this, I don't know, for this description, we'll call it, a crime occurred and the victim reported their car stolen and it was a white Chevy Astro van with stickers on the back window. And I'm assuming the victim would have their license plate, they could give that to the officers. The officers could then take that license plate, you know, they could, once it's entered into the system, then anytime that vehicle passes a Flock camera anywhere in California, it sends that agency a notification as to, it sends it a picture, you know, the license plate and also the location of where it's at, where it's heading. And it can help apprehend or locate that vehicle much quicker. Kind of the same concept if it was a, you know, a violent bar fight or something like that. If suspects or if a victim or witnesses got a partial vehicle description of a black Honda Civic that was fleeing the scene, they could easily conduct a search for that once that criminal investigation has begun and help identify the suspect even without a plate. Does that answer your question? You talking about more?
No, it does, it does. Because you spoke and during the town halls, like unless we have an active case, we're not going to be looking for these plates, we're not going to be looking for the description. There's going to be a hot list that stuff's popping up on. It's not like we have an enormous database of everything's pumped to these cameras that we're just constantly looking, like that's not the way it works. And I thought that was really informative for the public to see that there is a process.
Yes, sir.
And at the end of the day, it isn't like, even if something does pop up on your hot list, that you were going to, you know, break down someone's door without a warrant, right? There's still a constitutional process to follow and you guys are, you're just using it as a tool. Hey, I saw the white van with this license plate. We know it's in this area, so now we're going to go check it out.
Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to step on top of you there.
No, that's perfect.
That's okay. The next thing I'd ask is we, because I think this will always be a question, you know, I heard at the beginning, we addressed, or you guys addressed, it's not going to be facial recognition, that's, that goes without saying, at least if you've been to the town halls. Let's just say there's a camera sitting in an intersection and there is another crime that has nothing to do with vehicles. Is that video footage? Is there, I know it goes off of images, can that be used to investigate crimes?
So the cameras are motion activated. So if a suspect vehicle came through the intersection and that's what hit our hot list, that's what sent the alert, and there was other things in that picture when it went off, yeah, there could be, there could be, those pictures could be stored as well.
Right, okay. I'm guessing that Flock isn't the only company that you looked into when you were looking at this kind of technology, when you were doing your own research. In your opinion, are you okay with Flock Incorporated?
Yes. After doing the research, I think right now that Flock is the leader in this technology and it looks like it will be that way for some time.
Yeah, and trustworthiness, I think is big. We got to keep, I wish that we, as a city, we're not considering this. I wish that you, as a police department, did not have to come to us and say, hey, we need a tool to be a force multiplier for fighting crime. I wish that wasn't the case, but you are here, so now we're discussing it. And so we're constantly going to have to monitor the trust factor. And I know that part of that is going to be in the policy that you guys are going to write and create because that's how anybody's held accountable in any case. So if you're saying you trust the company, I took your word.
And just to, if I can expand on that a little bit more, one thing that we want to implement that Flock is also on board with is they have what's called a transparency portal that we plan on putting a link on our Facebook or our city website. And essentially that the citizens can look and see how often the officers are actually conducting searches utilizing Flock, what Flock is doing, and they can kind of get the, maybe not necessarily real time updates of what it's doing, but relatively real time updates of how effective Flock can be. And they can see it, you know, month by month and see the good that it actually does.
Right. Maybe this is Captain Tucker or Ron. Does it, I think I read in the report, it's a two-year contract, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So let's just say, I don't think this is the case because of all the data that you produce during those town halls shows overwhelmingly, this is going to be not just a force multiplier for you, but a huge crime deterrent. So I do not think it's going to be the case. But what if you, as a police department, decide, we don't want, we don't like the idea of using Flock because it's not working how we thought it would? Do we still have to wait out that two years because of the contract?
Yes, the contract is paid for, but on the start of the first year and the start of the second year, I'm sure that there is civil remedies that Flock would seek if we tried to not pay them for the second year.
Yeah, understood. Okay. Okay. I feel like I have a bunch of more questions, but I'll bring them back up later.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and step out to the public. Well, is there any public comment from the floor?
Yes, Ronald Porter. I have several questions and more than anything else, facts. They claim it's going into the cloud, it's going to be stored for 30 days, but number one, anything that goes into the clouds there forever, take that to the bank. It's backed up somewhere, it will be there. Number two, it's going to go on a server or a computer mainframe and the security of that mainframe is very, very dangerous at any time. The, I mean, I could see a shaking head, not disagreeing, but I used to run a state of that computer lab, I can tell you. There's no true way to make it secure. If the FBI or someone in the federal government wants it, they're going to get it. But the most important thing to think here is this is about liberty and this is about the government spying on you. How much safety, how much liberty are you willing to give away for a little safety? I heard a council member make a comment, you know, if you have nothing to hide, well, you know, this is how I'll take it. You're all public servants and I have to trust you even more, so I think you should allow them to search your house anytime they want. You'd go, that's ridiculous. Well, it's the same thing. Facial recognition software is not part of this, but if they have the picture, they could damn sure use it for that. This is not a very simple question. And as far as constitutionality, sir, I'm going to disagree with you. This has to do with electronic enhancement and that question because yet to be answered by the Supreme Court or anyone else. We have to consider exactly how much spying do we want on us? Between your cell phones and everything else, in DC on January 6th, they went so far as to get credit card records, all the license plate readers off the bridges, motel records, and there are several other things that they went and reached into. I trust my, you guys, I mean, I'd love to have it, but the only thing I know is people in power will always be abused. When I was a police officer, I even saw, and I just remember the database for officers to use to check backgrounds. I saw that abused. Each one of you members of council were sent a nice, a very good research paper by Mr. Neal, and I doubt if any of you took the time to even look at it. And it gives you exactly how many times the license plate readers and other things have been abused. Right now, they spy on us on almost everything we do. And as much as I enjoy, appreciate law enforcement, you have to understand everyone in power, somewhere there will get his hands on it and abuse it. I'm not saying that my local officers are going to. But it's always something going to be abused and it's something that's going to continue to expand. Exactly how much do you want them to know? Right now, between your computer and your phone, they know what color toilet paper you use. That's really a bad statement today, most of people don't understand. Used to be you could buy it in all kinds of colors, today you only get one white. But it's not a question of whether or not we can have safety with it, it's how much are you willing to give away to get there? And we really need to look at that. And the reason I'm saying constitutionality, the only case that's ever truly been written on constitutionality of looking at things and cameras and so on, so forth. If you're walking down the street, when an officer's standing on the curb or on the sidewalk, anything he sees from there is perfectly legitimate, even if there's a window opening, it's legitimate for him to use. Now, if he takes a pair of binoculars or a camera with a special lens on it, then it's no longer, then it's considered intrusion. I said, the question of the electronic one hasn't been answered yet, so I don't want anyone to make a claim that it has, because as far as I know, it hasn't. There were several complaints made about the things that happen in DC. I really think before you step down this path, I think you should look at Mr. Neal's document that he sent you, the link. It's got a lot of nice research on it and you need to send, look, this isn't about today, this is about tomorrow and the next day and the day after that. How far are they going to go? How much do they need to know about you? How can it be abused? If the right person has it, who knows? You have to trust the company that's not going to get shared. What if they get into the company and it comes out? Never believe anything on the computer is, today the storage is just too easy. It's there forever and anyone out there can abuse it. So that's what you have to think about. Although every one of us wants to be safe, but I'm not willing to say you can come search my house to make me safe. And we need to very seriously look at that and say, hey, this is what we have to do. Like I talked about, you can verify if it's being used properly. The problem with that is you have to know the case number that they, you'd have to be able to read the case file and see whether it was properly accessed, which we're not going to have access to. So then what I'm doing is again, as a citizen, I'm saying, I'm relying on this government agency, and I'm not picking on you guys, I mean, I love you to death, but I'm relying on this government agency to say, don't worry, I did it right. Unfortunately, we see that going wrong all the time. And I just have a very, a very serious problem giving that away. Something stops you on a traffic stop. And I've seen it done many times. And it says, you mind if I look in your car? And they'll say, well, no, I do. And it says, well, what do you, if you don't have anything to hide, let me look. Well, that's not the point. The point is, they shouldn't be asking. All I'm saying, this is things that have to be considered and we really don't want to go down this, you, you'd mentioned a rabbit hole. This is a kangaroo hole. It's going to get worse all the time. The more they learn, the more they can reach in, the more databases, the more stuff they can filter out of it. They had between your cell phone and everything, they'll be able to spy on you from the day you get up, in fact, with the services today. If I want to get your water bill, I can tell you when you take a shower, when you flush your toilet and when you wash your clothes. The same thing with electric bill. What time you turn the television off at night? With algorithms, you can, you can try solve this. So the question is, how much do you want to be spied on? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment from the floor? I'm going to give it a moment, is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing done, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Is there any other council comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
I have a couple of comments too, so.
Yeah, no, this, I think that what Mr. Porter said, a lot of those comments were valid. And I think it's important that somebody got up and said them because it is, it needs to be fresh in the community's mind to always be thinking about, always be keeping your own privacy in mind and your constitutional rights in mind. I think that's important. So I think as a council member, I came to my conclusion on wanting to support Flock and supporting the PD in this, because I've noticed that especially men go on a ride along, you see how much that the police department at an ever increasing rate, on the average day, has their hands tied behind their back and trying to fight crime. And I understand that's a state of California thing, that's where we live. And like I said earlier, you know, the reality is, I would love for the PD to be not asking for these cameras, for them to have as many cops as they, you know, fully staffed, but we're not fully staffed. It's a different environment we live in right now. So I appreciate you guys bringing it forward. I do. I wish it wasn't here, but it is. And I think that if the environment was different, there wasn't Senate bill upon assembly bill causing you guys to be bogged down in the minutia and preventing you from doing your job, it would be a different story, but that's not the case. And since that is the case, you need something to help fight crime. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are there any other council comments?
I just had a, it's more of a clarification for myself. So back in regards to shared data with other agencies within the state, is that data, or do they have access to the open day-to-day imaging going on with our cameras or is it only access for particular case-by-case basis?
So they would have the same restrictions that we have. They would, there would have to be an actual ongoing investigation.
Right.
They would, and so essentially if another agency was to utilize our cameras, the way that would happen is if they have a stolen vehicle from their jurisdiction that happens to drive through ours, or if they put a vehicle in their hot list, a catalytic converter theft or something like that, and they come through our city, it'll notify them and it'll notify us as well.
So it's just mutual agreement to work with each other in cases and incidents that occur and not just a free, you know, sharing of.
No, sir.
They don't have access to our data.
No, sir.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
I believe this is really a good tool to assist our police department to perform their duties efficiently. So I trust our police department. I know you will make the right calls, right judgment, and I'm pretty sure it will not be misused. So I am in favor of this. One question is, are there any legislation or any laws governing this or some kind of audits being performed on these ALPRs? Do we know anything about that?
There's existing law that requires departments to have a policy in place in order to be able to use the software.
SB 34 was passed that provides guidance specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any final comments, Mr. Gorman?
It occurred to me, as you get the system on board, start It occurred to me, as you get the system on board, start using it, I hope that our friends at Flock Safety work with you and initially allow you to adapt it to our special circumstances out here. And let it be dynamic at first, till it fits properly, like a good pair of shoes. Also, I'd really be curious about your impressions of how it does improve your efficiency, how it helps, how it's a headache. Early on, perhaps nine months after implementation, and perhaps we might figure out a way on a regular basis to get a reading from you guys. How's it going? How's it fit? How's it not fit? And let's see about all this for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Well, let me go ahead and reiterate several of my fellow council member's statements. Mr. Gorman, I wrote down, "Come back to council with data in the future." Absolutely. You know, I think that the best way to show the success of something is in talking about the success stories. And I hope that when you guys do find that you're able to solve crimes and able to help restore people's justice or property as a result of the use of the system, that we bring those stories to the council, and I hope that you'll bring those stories to share with us. The second is, I want to reiterate the comments of most council members, inefficiency. The simple fact is that, as we've said many times, the city of Ridgecrest does live within the state of California, which means that you are subject to state legislature rules, things like Prop 47, which now is having an effort to be overturned because we saw the idiocy of those policies. And the more we can make our department efficient, the more we can improve our citizens' quality of life and their public, their safety. It's that simple. And so I think the example of an officer being able to monitor an intersection, see those things, and being able to look through that data, this is a very strong efficiency tool when we talk about how it makes our officers more efficient in investigating crimes, and that's a really important thing to know. Third, I want to address the transparency portal. You know, we acknowledge it. You know, people have a right to have a concern, and they have a right to have doubts, and that's why we are trying to put those types of tools in place, that you can go and look and see, "How often are we using it? How are we using it?" I think that that type of transparency lacks in many, many communities across this nation, and I think that we're doing a stellar job of trying to make sure that through the town halls, through these communications, that we're trying to make sure that that transparency exists. And the last, I want to thank Mr. Porter for his comments, and he had a great sentence. He said, "This isn't about today, but about tomorrow." And as a father of four, it absolutely is. Because it's not about when one thing happens, but rather, I just want to imagine the moment that if something should happen to one of my children, or to a member of my family, or to my neighbor's children or my neighbor's family, or to one of my coworkers' children or one of my coworkers' family, this isn't about today, but it's about tomorrow. And it's about making sure that they have the opportunity for justice, and more importantly, that they have the opportunity to have closure. I can't imagine the heartache or trauma that somebody might go through, through a homicide, a rape, a kidnapping, any one of those. And if this should be able to even solve one case like that and be able to help bring justice to those victims and to those families, then I got to say that the amount of money that we're investing in this is minimal relative to the success and justice brought to one individual. That's what our goal is as a council, is to create the best possible community for our citizens as a whole. I think this absolutely accomplishes that, and I really appreciated him making that point, that it isn't about today, but it's about tomorrow. With that, I have no further comments, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve authorization to enter this agreement with Flock Safety.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Also, I just want to tell Sergeant Groves and his detectives that they did an amazing job with putting all this together and the hard work, and also to thank Flock representatives for all their help as well. And thank you, council.
I could see, Captain Tucker, you guys put the best-looking police officer out here to be the face of it.
That's debatable.
Except as wearing a hat. Thank you, guys. Thank you. We have already resolved item number seven. We're going to go ahead and move forward to item number eight. Item number eight is a proposed addition of a part-time administrative analyst to the city classification plan and the addition of this position to the remaining fiscal year 24 budget. Mr. Strand.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as you recall, back in November 22, the citizens voted for and approved Measure P, which is a one-cent sales tax. That promise for that sales tax was obviously to, you know, keep our fire department open, build a new pool, and one of the other items was to put on community events to help improve our quality of life. And that was based upon several surveys that we'd done leading up to Measure P, and including one that we did in October of 22, where we had about 1,200 people that participated in the survey. And through that survey, it came out that, you know, what people were really looking for was a strong desire for more community events to improve our quality of life. And in fact, about 48% of those who had engaged in that survey either worked or had a significant other that worked on the installation. So as we thought about how we were going to move forward, there were two items that we were contemplating. One was evening events, and the other was a city-sponsored farmer's market. At the time, we chose to move forward with the city entertainment events, which became Night On and Off Balsam, and which is now in part Ridgecrest City Nights. We've had four of those events that we put on. They've been a success. They've drawn the community together. They've had well over 3,000 to 4,000 people that have attended those events, and so it's really accomplishing what I think the community wanted, was something for the community to do together. And so I think the time now is right for us to move forward on the farmer's market aspect of this. The current farmer's market is winding down and is not opposed to us assuming their current farmer's market. We think this would be another element to our quality of life within the community. We're looking at, right now, possibly being a weekly farmer's market on Wednesday evenings. Obviously, we're quite flexible on that. We think having it on Balsam Street downtown will help enhance and improve our business environment down there by having more people in that area, as well as improving the people's quality of life by having a way of the community gathering together and spending time and doing something that's enjoyable. So what I'm asking of you is, we did budget funds in the Major P budget this year to put on community events. We do have sufficient funding still on that account. So what I'm asking for is to be able to bring on a part-time analyst one, because really right now, there's really, the current staffing, they don't have enough time to be able to put on the farmer's market. It is going to be labor-intensive. So we're asking to bring on a part-time, 20-hour-a-week analyst one. And what I'm asking council to do, because we don't have that analyst one position in our position classification, which we have to have, I'm asking to be able to create that position in our classification plan, and as well as to create that position in the remaining FY 24 budget. We're anticipating the cost of this position running until the end of the year will be about $9,000. So what I'm asking for is to approve the resolution, making those findings and recommendations. And I'm open to any questions.
Since Mayor has stepped aside, I'll take charge for a few minutes.
Sure.
So I'll ask for council comments, Councilman Gorman.
Just questions. The idea of the city doing a farmer's market came up a little while ago, and I wondered what precipitated that? Is the current farmer's market fixing to close?
Correct. Well, this started a couple of years ago, when we were, had the intent of trying to entice the farmer's market at the time to relocate to Balsam Street. And that, because a person left town, that never occurred. So the thought's always been to be able to have something on Balsam Street that we can support. Now, with it being city-centric, we can operate the farmer's market at a loss to be able to get vendors in. In other words, we can make the prices a lot more affordable, to be able to attract vendors that will, hopefully, the community is going to want to participate with. So for us, I think we, you know, our intent is to hopefully grow this to 30, 40 vendors every week, and be able to tailor it as a certified farmer's market that will have, you know, fresh vegetables, fruit, baked goods, and those other items that we can then bring the community in together to be able to participate.
Ron, thank you.
So I just have a question pertaining to the parameters that the analyst one position, it wouldn't be just for the farmer's market in an event that, you know, farmer's market didn't come about, they could be working on other similar type...
Well, I mean, if the farmer's market is a failure and it doesn't take off, we just eliminate the position. It's a part-time position.
Okay. I didn't know if that position would be ongoing to, you know, for other like-minded, you know, community, you know, projects that we might see.
Correct. Well, if we have, you know, if it gets down to the farmer's market becomes very efficient, and they're only spending 10 hours a week managing it, and have an extra 10 hours, yes, I'm going to be providing them other work to do, because that's why they'll be under the analyst position, which is just a general position.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Strand, we have, it says fiscal impact 9,000. So is that just for this year, or...
Correct. That's the remaining of this year. I would anticipate this position's going to cost us about 25,000 to 30,000 per year.
So how about next year again? Do we continue this position next year also?
Correct. My intent would be is, we would start the farmer's market, we're hoping, May 1st, and then once it's going, it would be in, we would propose it be in a next year's budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Blades?
No comments. Looks like you're housekeeping to keep things moving forward.
My only comment is, again, I think that we don't place enough value in our understanding of what these types of events do for a community. Do I appreciate that my wife buys $40 worth of strawberries and they're gone in two days? No, I don't. Do I appreciate that my kids have fresh fruit that they devour? Yes, I do. That's just a fact. It's just, it's how you want to look at the problem. You know, I think that when we have events that bring our community together, they can go up, they can go down, they can efficiently be ran, they bring commerce to our community, and they bring people traveling into our community for those types of things. I mean, if you're from Inyo Kern even, just, you know, let's just do something so simple as Inyo Kern. You know, maybe it's that motivation that gets you to drive into Ridgecrest for that day to get, to get fresh fruit, and maybe that chooses you to swing by Walmart and pick up an extra set of groceries, or go out to eat, or any one of the above. Though, creating drawing points that draw people into our community is important for our future economics, because we do need those types of things, drawing in, bring people in. And if you look at model cities like Tatchia and even what Lancaster did with their downtown district, there's proof in the pudding that these types of economic investments have long-term benefits to quality of life for the community. And that's why I strongly, again, support this direction.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're really trying to push, obviously, you know, the base has had a difficult time, and I think as well as the hospital and the city to some extent, of recruitment and retention. So when you look at a farmer's market, the base does recruit a lot out of college, and this is something familiar, most college towns have farmer's markets, and this is a way of trying to get that demographic that we're trying to keep here for our workforce, for the base, to get them something familiar with. And we're also looking at just drawing, like you said, drawing the community together so we're together. In the end, it solves a lot of problems that a lot of communities have that are insular, where you don't have them gathering together.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll go ahead and ask, is there any public comment? Ron Port again. Again, a question, not a comment. Exactly where did you want the farmer market to be?
We're looking at for it to be on Balsam Street between French and Panamit, which is basically the heart of our downtown.
Is there enough room there?
There should be, yes.
Or should you pick a different place? I would just wonder if you, why you wouldn't, when it's, that you could actually have a more usable area.
There's actually, if you look at a 10-by-10 tent, you can do 24 spaces along the curb line, you can probably go four deep.
Yeah, but when you do that, then there's no parking there. That's my concern.
Well, you're not going to have, you're not going to have parking in the farmer's market, it's going to be with bollards, they're going to block it off, but you will have parking on either side.
And there's not much there either.
Well, there'd be, those people are very inventive. There's sufficient parking within that neighborhood to handle...
The city has a lot of parking.
Yeah. Yeah, there's sufficient public parking to handle the farmer's market.
Well, I mean, I disagree, but that's okay. Why don't you consider someplace there's actually more room and easier to walk through, or something, you know, like the, in front of our rec center on Saturday, or another large parking area somewhere.
Well, yes. Our Kerr McGee Center is a great place to have that. I mean, I think our Night Off Balsam has shown that our civic center here is a great place to do events, but we're also trying to accomplish something else. We're trying to revitalize our downtown. We're trying to get more foot traffic, more people in that area for those businesses so they can help thrive and be able to do a little bit better. And maybe the more, more the public gets down there, the more they're going to participate, the better those businesses will do. So that's kind of a compromise, yes. There's always, could be a better place, maybe here, but it doesn't accomplish the other end of the spectrum, which is to revitalize our downtown.
I understand. I don't, I really don't consider that to be a major factor. The downtown could be, could be better, but to me, if you're really looking at the idea of bringing the farmer's market for it as a, as a, as an item for people to come to, I don't think that's probably the best choice. Just my comment, so.
Well, you're right, Mr. Porter, that it may turn out that that may be the case. I mean, one of the things about it being a city-run farmer's market is we have that ability to move it around. We have the ability to change a date. If Wednesday evenings doesn't work and it needs to be Saturday, we can adjust that. So I'm not set in stone where this is going to eventually be at or the timeframe, but I do think our initial goal, in part, is to help our local businesses, which we have not always done in the past. So I think it's important that we show our local businesses that aren't franchise-owned that we also support their, their businesses in their areas, too. It is important.
I got one question for you, though. Has not, is actually with your program. I'm assuming, unless I don't know, do you require a business license for a farmer's market?
Yes.
Are you going to have a special business license for, for just farmer's market?
We have a licensing process that already exists that can be utilized in the farmer's market.
Well, I'm saying, but if they says, "I want to come for a month," can they just pay for a month worth of fees to use it?
Yeah.
I don't know what your business license for that is. I mean, I see vendors, I just don't know. I'm asking out of ignorance, not out of harm.
Yeah, there'll be, I mean, obviously, if you're selling food, you have to have a health permit, you know, so all the, all the county and state regulations.
They have to have a health permit to sell fresh food?
Sure.
Too much government. Yeah, we live in Nazi land. Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? I'll give a moment for the phones.
While we're waiting that one moment, I do want to point out that we do have an updated part-time salary schedule that was handed out to you guys. This is what you'll be approving tonight, not what was in the agenda. There are some extra ones up there, if anybody wanted to see them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So given the, given the updated salary schedule, no? No, you ready?
I see no comments on the phone. I'll bring it back to council for the comments. Mr. Blades?
No further comments.
Hearing no other comments, do I have a motion for approval of the addition of a part-time analyst to the city classification plan?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
I apologize, Mr. Blades, did I cut you off there? I didn't intend to.
I didn't intend to.
You're good.
Okay.
I was ahead of myself.
Oh, okay, I was just making sure that.
No, you're good. My, my head's kind of in the clouds tonight.
Just making sure, sir. Next is item number nine. Item number nine is a public hearing. We'll be conducted a public hearing for the adoption of a resolution establishing West Los Flores Avenue between North Mahan Street to North Downstreet, and on North Downstreet between West Los Flores to West Church as an underground utility project district to utilize SCE Rule 20A funding. Mr. Reed, I need to first open the public hearing. We'll go ahead and open our public hearing at 7:58 PM, and staff report, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, council. I feel like it's been months since I've been up here and got to talk to you guys. So this is Rule 20A funds, this program is going away in the next two years, so you had to have a project submitted and get the ball rolling before the end of 2024. As you guys all know, the school district has recently come to us and talked to us about the need for sidewalk on the south side of Los Flores, and we did put that in the budget to do it this year, but after surveying it and looking at where all the pole placements are, it became nearly impossible to be able to get the sidewalk in. To, in order to enact and make this an underground district, you have to find certain findings, one of which is undergrounding will avoid or eliminate any unusual heavy concentration of overhead electric facilities. These are major transmission poles. I would say that that constitutes a heavy concentration of overhead power pole facilities. The street, road, or right-of-way is extensively used by the public and carries a heavy volume of pedestrians or vehicular traffic. Downs is a major thoroughfare, and Los Flores and Downs both carry heavy loads of traffic for school. And the street, road, or right-of-way is considered an arterial, which it is, or major collector as defined by the Governor's Office of Planning and Research General Plan Guidelines. So technically, these routes, in my opinion, fit all three. So as I said, Rule 20A is going away. We had a surplus in our Rule 20 account of $3,575,600. So with that, we have put about 20 grand worth of general fund money, I think you guys all know how busy we are right now. So we hired a consultant to prepare all this stuff for us and get all this stuff going so we didn't miss the deadline. The project will be fully designed by SCE and paid for by SCE. The only thing we will have to pay for is if there's any special condition or things like that. So trench pan shape, patching will get paid for by SCE, all that good stuff gets paid for by SCE. And with the sidewalk project and the inability, we had to really design around what was there, we felt that it was prudent for us to do this and get these poles moved and get all this infrastructure undergrounded before we spent $275,000 like we budgeted to put the sidewalk in. Including with this, we actually went a little bit further than Ridgecrest Boulevard, and we went down to church. As you guys know, the Kerr McGee ballpark is over there, and Nerissa and her crew have a really, really tough time anytime we have to do any work to the lights because they cannot get up near the transmission poles. So we're kind of killing, killing two birds with one stone with this. Anyways, and after that, I'm open for any questions that you guys may have.
So, go a little bit further into detail on how this impacts Kerr McGee. I, I get it, I just want to make sure I fully understand. So, so right now, I know we have a terrible time with managing those poles because they are right next to the transmission, and, but that whole transmission plant is sitting there.
So the transmission plant is not going to move.
Right.
It's just the transmission poles that are in front of the park and the wires that are overhead.
That are overhead of that park.
That are overhead by that park.
Will then be underground.
Will then be underground in conduit with vaults and things, so they'll hopefully fit it in the dirt area in between the Kerr McGee fence. And if with things in the dirt area at, by the, let's just use the pony field, for example, that backs up to Downs, when it's in the dirt, the parks crew could then take the Zoom Boom, could take anything they would need into the field and can safely go up with our fall protection and be able to tighten the net, be able to replace the net, be able to install new poles to hold the net, be able to change a light when a light goes out, things like that. So it's more of a functionality thing to be able to do the maintenance that we need to do, and obviously, we all know, we've talked numerous times about lighting projects. This is also the first step to being able to do a lighting project there because now you're not going to have additional costs because the people doing the lights are now going to have to be working around high voltage transmission, or we're not going to have additional costs to have Edison de-energize while we put light posts up.
And then, you know, at the end of the day, this project is probably a multi-year project to be completed, correct? This is probably.
Correct. We assume it'll probably be about a two-year project. It kind of gets to follow an SCE timeline because, like I said, we're not really in control of it, we're doing our part right now and declaring it an underground district. Once it's been declared an underground district, that then kicks in SCE, once we send them the resolution, they will then go and start preparing their design. SCE's, the, the local staff have been great at trying to aid us, but this will not be handled by the local staff because it's transmission, high voltage, things like that, so it will be handled by outside department. So as far as times, I couldn't really put my finger on it, but I wouldn't expect to see construction on any of this for at least a couple of years.
Can you just explain to me a little bit about where 20A funds come from and why we have $3 million there? Is this something that we are allocated specifically annually? Is this something that's a 10-year accumulation of stuff we haven't done?
Correct. So we did a couple other Rule 20A projects. We've done one on China Lake Boulevard before they repaved China Lake in 2014, I think is when they did that. They did a Rule 20A project before that. But there, there are allocations that are given to us by the CPUC based on the amount that your jurisdiction spends on electricity. So essentially, if we didn't use this money, which is in ours, it just goes right back into SCE's pot of money.
Perfect, so, so that's why it's critical that this gets moved forward now.
We didn't want to miss the deadline, and we wanted to use all of our funds, and based on preliminary estimates, I, I didn't know if the, because I was like, man, I don't know how much it costs to underground something like this, but based on preliminary estimates from our discussions with SCE, the available work credit amount that we have is really, really close to the amount that we need to be able to do this project from an estimate standpoint.
And, and so there is, there remains the possibility that at some future point, there may be a need for additional general funds, depending on what that final cost comes out to be, correct?
Correct. And, I mean, really, to be honest with you, if it comes down to that point, I, and I don't know this for a fact, for as truth, I don't have enough research in front of me to know if, hey, once you've designed it, if you can pay for the design portion, but then you can alter it, I don't know, but there's a section that the poles are actually far enough back that I think we could get the sidewalk in, so if it came down to that, I would probably eliminate, try to eliminate a section, or try to explore every other possibility and just get the absolute sections we need done. But my opinion, and obviously, you guys have the final say, but my opinion is we're only going to see town, the whole middle section of town in that area is pretty much, pretty close to built out, where the tracks are going to be coming and where tracks are going to be starting to build are behind Mauer's Track, or off of Downs, or further west of Downs, right? So I, I think it's.
West on, yeah.
Yeah, west, towards the western end of town, so I, I think it's a benefit to the public, let alone just for the unsightliness of giant, large poles that have multiple wires on it, so. But ultimately, like I said, it's your decision if we want to, but I think it would be prudent of us to try to spend all those credits and not give any of those back.
And then finally, we would have to wait until this project was completed before we, we would hope to address the sidewalk, correct?
I, I think that is prudent to do, as much as I don't want to put it off because we did promise the school district that we were going to try to get that done. I think it is prudent to do just because I, I think we would look pretty foolish if we went out there and put the sidewalk in, and then SCE came in and said, we want to put the, the underground electricity lines under the sidewalk.
Directly under the sidewalk.
And we used up a bunch of our credits for sidewalk replacement after the fact, so, and cost us more money to underground it. I think we spend the money, get it underground, and then we do the sidewalk installation.
And I, and I think, I happen to strongly agree, but, you know, hey, let's talk about the anecdotal stories that people like to say is, oh, I saw them put it in, and then they break it up. No, we, we spend a lot of time thinking about that well in advance.
Mr. Reed, is there, is there a possibility to put that sidewalk in, that once it's designed by SCE and it, and it shows that that sidewalk's not going to be affected, could we put the sidewalk in first if we know that, based upon their design, that that won't occur?
Absolutely, I think we could put portions of it in. I don't think we could do it all, and the reason why I say that is, no matter what, they're going to have swings.
Right.
And.
Poles to be removed and stuff.
Why can I not think, what are the sweeps? Thank you, I was calling them swings. Sweeps that are going to have to sweep from wherever the trench is, under the curb, under the sidewalk, so their vaults sit, unless they decide to put their bolts in the road. They could decide to put their bolts in a road, but if, I think if it comes to the point where we see that the sidewalk on Los Flores is not impacted, we'll definitely start getting preparer, prepared to put a sidewalk in. But the poles do have to move before we do it, or at least do the ramps, because I can't do the ramps with a pole sitting right in the middle of where that comes out.
Correct, yeah, obviously, yeah. I think all of my questions are addressed. Personally, again, I can't say it enough, but I, I think this is something that we've been doing very, very smartly over, over the last several years, which is, we don't just look at a one thing, we, we take one problem, but we actually analyze it from three different ways to see how to accomplish the best possible solution for the community. And resolving the, the ball fields for Parks and Rec is a huge benefit. At the same time, we're accomplishing the benefit for the school district, at the same time, we're accomplishing the benefit of making that area more attractive, more, more appealing, all the things that we're doing at the same time. So I just want to compliment the vision of not just looking at one problem, but actually looking at multiple problems and how a solution can accomplish many different facets of that, so thank you.
And I, I got to give City Manager Strand a little bit of credit on that because he, he repeatedly sent me the emails of what can we use this for? And I, I repeatedly told him, this is more of a headache than I have time to deal with right now, and he was the one that said, let's just find a consultant and do it for something, and that's when we put our heads together and figured out a way to use it, so.
I, I, I will, I will stress for the public one more time. This is what Measure P has empowered the city to do, because when we are able to take $20,000 and say, let's get the consultant in, let's get the $3 million in play, let's get the process started, compared to, we are literally walking around trying to find the, the quarter out of the bottom of the seat cushion in order to pay somebody, this is the difference that you're experiencing because now we're starting to move projects forward, and $3 million that would have been chucked back to SCE.
Correct.
Is now back invested into our community because we had the fuel in the tank to do the work that needed to be done. Cannot stress enough to the citizens how much the, this is the combination of V and P in motion for you as citizens, so, thank you.
We'll go ahead and start, we'll go, Mr. Roger Rotenham, you got anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reed, in your presentation, you said this is a three-step process, so we are fulfilling all the three steps today?
No, sir, we fulfilled step one as a consent agenda item two meetings ago. It was a consent agenda item which set the public hearing. This public hearing is step two of the process and then providing SCE the resolution, actually saying that this has been declared, now it's actually unlawful to put any overhead utilities in it. That's the step three portion of it, and then that's when design and construction and all that stuff will start going into play.
So we are taking care of the step three also today, right?
So we will, this resolution will begin the step three process, yes, sir.
Okay. So which means, will it come back to us again?
Eventually, I, you know, honestly, Solomon, I don't know for sure if the project schedule has to come back, but I can look at.
Well, there's any cost differences it would have to.
Right?
No, it will, so this will come back to you for a resolution, which basically is ratifying the project schedule, I just have to look at my notes in my staff report. So this will come back to you, and then obviously, if there's any additional funds or anything like that, we would, I would come back to council to authorize either additional funds or ask them if they would like me to pull something out, or that can be vetted through infrastructure, however, however we all wish or think it's best to handle.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Blais? Mr. Chairman?
No comments.
Mr. Gorman?
My comment is to encourage this. I find the, the telephone poles and its attendant wires and aesthetic blight, it assaults my sensitivities as I'm driving around in my pickup truck. This Nikola Tesla tried to tell us, electricity belongs underground. I do have a technical question, though. I listen to the AM radio on my pickup truck while I'm driving around town, as I drive under those, those wires that are broadcasting, static like crazy, you know, that must take a lot of power. It drowns out my radio. When the same wires are underground, will they still be broadcasting static? Set this case upwards.
I will tell you this, I know they will still be broadcasting some static, but I don't think it will be near as impactful to your AM radio because the ground will act as a natural insulator.
There you go.
But, but I forgot to tell you, there's one other part, we're putting streetlights up every 10 feet for you down there.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. That's a problem.
I'm kidding.
I know.
We'll point them up for you, too.
Thank you. With that, I will now turn to the public, and I'd like to hear any public comment. Is there any public comment?
Another question. Ron Port, on the district, the reason we're asking for the district, I'm making an assumption for what they did in the past, is the state wants to make the, sure that the community has input when they're spending the money that they have allocated to them.
I think that is, that is definitely one aspect of it. The other aspect is, is in order for them to be, I don't want to say forced, but to be coerced politely into doing the work, you have to have a council resolution declaring this area an underground utility district.
Oh, so it's just declaring the district, okay, I understand, less, a little more clarity, yes. Because they use district, there are many different terms in the law, so it's very strange sometimes.
Correct, so our district is very defined, obviously, it's the Downstreet corridor from church to the northern edge of Los Flores, and then the whole western leg of Los Flores from Downs to Mahan.
I saw that, I just didn't remember. About one question. You're going down, Downstreet to, to West Church. If you have access, can you run it further down, say all the way down to Upjohn or something? Just curious.
We could, if we declare, we'd have to come back, declare a district, but our work credits with where we're at are really, really close to the money that we've gotten allotted, but you could, I mean, we could declare the whole city an underground district.
Oh, no, I know, I was just curious if you could, if, if, how, how do I put that? If you have a district under the rules, do you actually have to, to put the underground line throughout the entire district or just what you have money for?
So that's, that was, that goes back to my question, I don't know how it works with, once we've declared the district, we probably have to do the full district. I don't know if I can stop it in between, but I, I am thinking that we could declare the district, but then request them not to do some of the end, like if it gets down to Los Flores and Mahan, where I don't have sidewalk issues right at the very, very end, obviously, that's going to be the first area that we're all either, probably have to bring back to council and repeal that portion of the district. So, but you could very well, I think, add to it as long as it's still, the program is still around.
A question, you think if you get a chance or find some of the answer to this, is can we actually make it bigger and only do part of it at a time?
So, like I said, though, this program is going away.
No, I understand, when, if you run into them again, yes.
Yeah, so if we run into it again, we can always come back and declare another district.
I can tell you're going to have another one.
I, I.
No, no, because, because the Public Utility Commission just passed some more stuff, so.
They passed timing, timing for getting electricity to lots, too, which I think is pretty cool.
And Mr. Gorman? To answer your question, your static will go away. You get, you get harmonic frequencies off the, off the poles because of the, the insulators, and that's, it's really not a bunch of power, it's when you get harmonic frequency coming off the lines, and that's why it interferes with AM radios.
Thank you for the information.
The, the, the old lines out there and old wires, you get more noise on your radio.
Thank you for the information, sir.
Did not know that.
Is there any other public comment? Give a moment for the phones. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution as presented.
Make a motion to approve that. Make a motion to approve it.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and second?
Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number 10. Item number 10 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning Accessory Structures, and make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to the environmental review under SEQA. We're back to ADUs.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not quite ADUs, okay.
No, good evening, council. So what I have for you tonight, first one, is an amendment for accessory structures, not to be confused with accessory dwelling units. So accessory structures is like your sheds, anything that's accessory to the main dwelling. The reason that we even have this before you tonight is, we, at the building counter, have received a lot of inquiries. Our municipal code right now on accessory structures does not have a lot of development standards, so that is the full intent of this amendment tonight. Because when people do call and they are interested in what the requirements are, we just don't have an in-depth development standard like we do with everything else. So, the main thing with this amendment is intending to do is provide those development standards. So as an accessory structure, it's supposed to be subordinate to the main structure, but that wasn't clearly defined, so now we're defining that. So we're saying it can't be more than 2/3 of the size of the main structure, and that it cannot exceed the height of the main structure. There's also additional language in here pertaining to cargo containers. Cargo containers will be permitted by right in industrial, agricultural, and institutional In commercial zones, they can get a CUP for any cargo containers, but that does not prohibit, like, temporary storage, like pods. So in a residential neighborhood, if you wanted to rent a pod, you could do that and have it in your front yard for 30 days without any, any issues. In commercial, that's 90 days. This doesn't include, like, structures for, like, while people are building. Those obviously could be longer than 90 days. And then it also is going to make a determination that the Public Works Director would be able to make particular findings. So if, for instance, that the applicant wanted the accessory structure larger, then the Public Works Director would be able to make some findings that that was not a risk to public health and safety, and that it was compatible with the surrounding uses. All of this code section is already being implemented in Kern County, so this came pretty much from Kern County and was just tailored to our community, as far as our zoning. But it's already implemented everywhere around us in the valley. So, the entire code, in all of its technical glory, is in the ordinance, so if you have any particular questions, please let me know. But other than that, this is just the first reading, and I will be back again. This also went to Planning Commission in January, and they approved it with the recommendation that City Council considered.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go ahead and start with any council comments. Is there any council questions?
No questions. This is more housekeeping and getting to the date.
Now, I said, we're talking about C containers and things of that nature, not ADU, sorry. But, I had so much on with ADUs, I thought they were coming back.
Just one comment. So we are giving unlimited powers to our Public Works Director, right? To increase the height as well as the size?
No, so he has to make, or the position has to make.
I know, he'll be responsible, no doubt about that.
Yes, they have to make three particular findings. So the first finding is that if it's a square footage increase, that it's not, that it's appropriate for the property. So if there's a particular instance where that is compatible with the surrounding uses for that particular property, so maybe the house, you know, whatever. It's up to them to decide if that is compatible. And they can also increase the, the height. So if that was, but that's it. They can only increase the size, the square footage and the height, and they have to make the finding that it's not going to be detrimental to the public health and safety, and that it's compatible. Otherwise, they would have to go to Planning Commission for variance.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Hamon or Mr. Gorman, any questions? Any comments? Just to clarify, how does this apply to carports? This is, this is, this would have direct implication on carports, correct? Because that's an accessory unit?
So, the thing about, that we've experienced with carports in the past
And so I'm asking.
is, and this kind of goes along with cargo containers as well, is that people aren't coming and getting those permitted anyway. So that, so those are not legal structures, no matter what. If they come and get it permitted, then they already had to follow the setbacks, and so yes, it would apply. But what we have right now doesn't meet the code anyway.
Got it. So this both enhances and further, further provides clarification of the code.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other council comments, I believe. Is there any public comment?
Just a question. How do they define auxiliary, auxiliary dwelling or auxiliary? Because it's, I couldn't find it in the ordinance, I go, how do they define what auxiliary? Or what term did they use in there? I'm sorry.
Accessory.
Accessory.
I'm going to make an assumption, correct me if I'm wrong.
So, the code section is 106-28, and accessory structures, as it currently says, that they're subordinate to the main structure, and I think that's pretty much the only thing that's in the definition. So we're not changing the definition.
Oh, I was assuming that these are things that are, you know, like, you're going to put a garage up behind your house, or something like that.
Correct.
I mean, but one of them, and I couldn't remember which one, this is the reason I'm asking, question, one talked about greenhouses. Maybe that's the next ordinance you have up there.
Greenhouses, I believe, is on the next.
Accessory dwelling unit is a habitable structure, and it is a place that, for, for people to live in.
Oh, it's habitable, habitable, yes.
That's different physics, though.
Yep.
An accessory dwelling unit is a house, like a mother-in-law.
Right.
An accessory structure, like you said.
Right.
Garage, patio.
So they're two different things.
Something that is accessory to the main dwelling.
Right.
Not considered habitable space, or storage, things like that.
Right, but, but something, if someone wanted to put up a six-by-six shed, they don't need a permit for it.
Correct.
Okay, I, I just want, I'm just making sure I understand. That was my only question, because I don't blame you, I understand, somebody makes a rule and you have to try and follow it, and sometimes it's really a pain in the, but that's why, I just couldn't understand the exact definition of it. So basically, it's making someone happy in, happy in the state somewhere. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council, and I would entertain a motion to introduce by title only, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning Accessory Structures, and make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to environmental review under SEQA.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
And then I would request a motion to waive the reading in full of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning Accessory Structures, and make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to the environmental review under SEQA.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second, depending on who Merka wants to say is first, and...
Please vote, sorry.
You guys threw her off.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is item number 11. Item number 11 is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning R4 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District, and to make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to environmental review under SEQA. Ms. Berlach.
So this is really a very basic housekeeping item. In 2015, the ordinance was updated pertaining to R4 to include emergency shelters. At that time, in the ordinance, they deleted multifamily as a permitted use under the R4 multifamily district. So that is what this does. It just adds in the permitted use of multifamily in the multifamily district.
Housekeeping.
Whoopsie.
Understand, this is a 2015 housekeeping item. Is there any council discussion?
None for me.
I have none? You got a spelling error?
I, no.
Okay, come on, ah, I was waiting for it.
No spellings. Have a question, though. So was this removed previously with any intention, or it was accidentally removed?
Oh, it's, it's accidental. You can look at the ordinance, and then you can look at the staff report and see that it was supposed to be there, it's just a...
Oh, okay. So how did this trigger now, all of a sudden? How did this come up? I mean, you have been reading the...
Me reviewing the code.
Oh, good job then, thank you.
The most perfect direct answer you could possibly get.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing no other council comments? Public comments, sir?
I have a question again. It's multifamily, so that got deleted somehow?
Yes. So every code section has permitted uses and then conditional uses. So under this code section, which is multifamily, the first permitted use is a single-family dwelling in it. And nowhere in the permitted uses or conditional uses does it say that you can have a multifamily.
This one, this was not impacted by the, the thing the state tried to get through for mother-in-law units?
No.
That was my concern. Because one of them, is this the one that had greenhouses in it? Yes, sir. In terms of, on the resolution, yes, sir.
Yeah, because I think that's probably a conditional use under it, but that's not a change. That's, that was already there, probably.
Oh, I'm sure it was, I was just curious, the way it talked about, I'm assuming they're talking about a permanent decent-sized greenhouse, not something, something to go to Walmart and buy, you know, just like a shed. That was my only concern there, thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the phones? I'll give it a moment. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. I would like to ask for a motion to introduce by title only, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning R4 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District, and make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to the environmental review under SEQA.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
And I'd like to entertain a motion to waive reading in full, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code Concerning R4 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District, and make a finding that the amendment of the zoning code is not subject to the environmental review under SEQA.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second?
Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for your diligent work in discovering an accidental deletion. Okay, our next item on our agenda this evening is our committee reports. We have multiple committees starting to, obviously, start to meet. It looks like our only committee that has met since the last meeting is our Finance Committee, that met last week. You saw the fruits of that in our presentation from our bond providers this evening. We also spent time, as we always do, looking at the current tax and revenues for the city and, and our outbound expenditures. I will say that everything is looking in, in very good order. I want to thank City Finance Director Shree for providing us some really good insight on some of the timing issues, and it's something that we want to bring back to you as a future discussion item, which is just providing a greater oversight for the public to understand when we do and when we do not receive sales tax revenue from an online purchase. We got a very good chart that was provided, we had a very vigorous conversation over it, but there's certain things that, you know, just to give you an example, and thank you, Mr. Hamon, for sharing your notes. You know, we may not realize, but if a purchaser receives from an online sale, if they should receive that product at a home business, who gets the money? Who gets the sales tax revenue? Is it the city? Is it where the warehouse distribution point is? Is it where that seller is? And so it was an excellent breakdown of understanding that, obviously, at a brick-and-mortar location within our community, the sales tax revenue is going to be collected for our community. But I think everyone automatically makes the assumption that if I've purchased it through Amazon, that we are going to see the sales tax. Well, that is partially correct, but it's really only partially correct about 2% of the sales tax, and that is the 2% that is secured through Measure V and Measure P for the exclusive use of the City of Ridgecrest. Everything else is subject to legislative manipulation, either for it belongs to the distribution center, it belongs to the city where the product was created, it belongs to somebody else, and so we don't understand that in those online sales, the competition for sales tax has became a vigorous process, which, having our 2% secured, ensures that when you purchase anything online or in a brick-and-mortar, we're going to get our 2% for the City of Ridgecrest, which is a critical and very important concept that I believe often is not understood by the citizens, because they assume that I paid 9 and 1/4, so how much is the city getting? They're getting a lot more than 2%. In some cases, based on the exact chart, and this is fantastic, we may get as little as 1/4 of 1% of the residual, beyond that, 2%.
Scary.
So if you have a 9 and 1/4% sales tax, we may get 2%. The rest is going to somebody else, minus maybe 1/4 of 1%. Really important fact, we hope to bring this to you at a future educational opportunity, especially as we begin the conversations towards the reaffirmation of Measure V. That was what we spent a lot of our time talking about, as well as obviously interviewing and discussing with the bond companies, and the understanding of how those discounts are going to play, where our ratings were, the due diligence that the city staff took in evaluating different securities firms, and I think they did a great job in terms of sharing, remembering for the public that the purpose of these committees is to vet the items for those questions before they come to our council, so that they can provide us the, the most direct information and address those questions. So thank you to our staff. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Hamon?
No, other than I, I believe this was the chart that Shree had, had gone to a finance convention for finance directors, and was able to bring back this wonderful chart for us, so we thank you for your, pursuing your further education down there, and, but it's nice to see it actually, you know, bring something, you know, usable back, you know, to the, to your work, and so, thank you very much.
And, so thank you again. I don't believe there are any other meetings that have occurred. There is a heads up, I would just make sure the public is aware, it's entirely possible and most likely that the Parks and Rec Quality Life Meeting will be canceled for March, as well as the City Org Meeting for March, as I will be in Washington DC on both of those dates. But I can tell you that good progress has continued to be made in both of, of those areas. Next would be other boards, committees... Next would be other boards, committees, and commissions. Does anybody have any reports? So I get to do this, too? So I got to tap in for Mr. Blades on a couple of his, which has been good. I want to, first, I got to attend the Desert Mountain Division meeting of Cal Cities in Barstow and the, what's the name of the house? Hanson House? Howler House? It's the railroad station in Barstow. It was very interesting, it was a fun day and a chance to interact with them again. I'm excited to share that we will be welcoming the Desert Mountain Division visiting the City of Ridgecrest in September. We hope to have a chance to show them so many of the projects that we have been moving forward on. And I told them, I said, I said, "My goal here is when you show up, that there's big machinery working just outside of wherever we're meeting on a pool." The other opportunity was, of course, interacting with the officials, especially elected officials' representatives, for Congressman Obernolte and Congressman Kylie. It's really important that we connect with those other congressmen, especially right now while we currently have a vacant congressional seat, that making sure that those, both of those gentlemen were cosponsors for the Ridgecrest land annexation bill, and making sure that we are continuing those relationships was good, and had lots of chances to talk to them. The second one I got to tag in for was for Kern Cog. Not a whole lot to report, but I'd like to share quirky stories with the public, because I think it really highlights what we've been doing very wisely. And at this meeting, one of the proposals that was discussed is an effort, possibly in the 2026 process, for a countywide half-cent sales tax measure to support infrastructure and roads throughout the county, to which I got a very interesting response when I asked them, "What do you do for cities that already have capped out the county's ability to further sales taxes by securing the full 2% for their community?" And I'll simply say that that question bewildered them. And goes to stress, again, the comments of this council and of this community in why Measure P was so critical in securing our 2% in a ongoing and perpetual way for this community, rather than our continued dependence upon the county and/or the state for additional resilience. So it was an interesting meeting at the end, and threw them a big curveball that they didn't see. With that, that was all of mine. I will go ahead and pass it to City Manager Tran. City Manager, report?
Yes, Travis coming up, I think. Travis has something he wants to add.
Don't trip and fall.
Yeah, no, I started going to the gym again. It's not pretty.
We all know.
I just thought I'd give everybody an update. As of today, the last section of pipe in Carmageddon was installed. So we are going to be videoing that line to make sure with how deep it is and how much compaction effort we had to go into the stand, that we didn't crush a portion of pipe. Once we get the video back, we'll be in full reconstruction mode to make sure we leave the areas that we affected better than when we got there.
So let me just go ahead and ask for the public, because since they're all going to ask, that includes repaving China Lake Boulevard-
Yes, sir.
-all the way down from Argus through California, correct?
So we are doing-
Yeah, yes.
The lightning in the rain comment. I saw that, which did, I'm not going to lie, there are not very many comments on Facebook these days make me laugh. That one did make me laugh.
That one was a good one.
But no, so we are repaving from the lane line of the number one lane, number two lane, all the way to the curb and gutter, within the Caltrans right-of-way. And then we're doing our standard trench patch from Ridgecrest Boulevard to California, because that road's been overlaid so many times. As you guys all know, the curb has disappeared in the median. I didn't feel it was prudent to resurface that whole lane, to know that eventually we just need to come back and rip 14 inches of asphalt out, because it's been overlaid seven times. So I didn't want to waste money to, right now, on that, and would rather wait and just trench patch it and then do it right when we have the opportunity to.
Okay. And we'll also address from China Lake eastbound on California, or has that already been done?
So, from China Lake eastbound to Richmond, the majority of our trench patching is done. The major holes have been patched. We have a couple of sections that still have some work to be done, where we did point repairs after the fact, and we have cross gutters that still need to be rebuilt, that we're going to rebuild when we have the concrete contractor in that's going to redo all the curb and gutter down the side of China Lake that we had to rip out. And it will be, like I said, it will be put back to better than the way it was when we got there.
And then, just for clarification, laying the last pipe, some video. If you were to be the estimator, assuming all goes as planned, when would citizens see Carmageddon over?
So after this, after we video, and hopefully the early part of next week, we will begin the dismantling of the bypass. Once the bypass is underway of dismantling, China Lake Boulevard headed southbound should be back to one through lane of traffic. And then all of our work, doing repair work, should only require a lane closure. So China Lake should not be closed down any longer. Actually, I take that back. There is one other time that we will have the intersection of French shut down, and that is when we went under the storm drain that's in, off of French, off the northeast corner of French and goes to the southwest corner of French and China Lake Boulevard. When we dug under it, the whole bottom fell out of it. So while we are, already have approved traffic control and things like that, we are going to replace that storm drain, so that way we don't have to go back into the right-of-way. And I, we can stand by our word and say that we replaced all of our infrastructure within that right-of-way, and will not be back for 50 years.
Once again, smart processing.
So, and then the other thing I wanted to tell you is, as of tomorrow, well, two weeks ago, the new controllers on China Lake Boulevard got installed. So all of the controllers from California to college heights are in. Radars, radar, radar, I don't know why I do that. Radar is still having ghost call issues, but I got word from Conalite that they are starting our signal upgrade project tomorrow. So they will begin with cabinet replacements at all 14 locations, beginning tomorrow. They'll do one intersection a day. Once the cabinets are replaced, then we're going to start putting up all the radar detection systems and things like that and begin programming.
Yeah, I would say, I've noticed that the intersection at China Lake and Upjohn is, yeah, China Lake and Upjohn is also, seems very fast for some reason, but we're getting closer.
Yes.
It's thrilling to hear.
So, and that was all I had, and just thought I'd give you guys a few updates.
That's an update we like to hear.
I have nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Any future agenda items? Does any council member have any future agenda items for consideration? And mayor and council comments? We'll go ahead. We're going to let Mr. Gorman be our kickoff here today.
It hurts to talk, so I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hayman?
No comments.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
No comments.
Mr. Blades? Well, then I'll do it. So, I have a couple. I just want to once again extend an invitation to the citizens and the community to join us at the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce Economic Outlook Conference tomorrow, which should be a great opportunity. And then just want to again reiterate for Mr. Siani, I do hope that you hear about the conference, because we will be doing a State of the City in the morning with my address, and we've done a really nice job, I think. Let me compliment Jen Ricketts and our team in our marketing and social media for creating a great presentation that not only just kind of shows the, some of our lightness, but also how much work has gone into the community. And then, of course, as Mr. Gorman said earlier, Saturday is our first City Nights, Ridgecrest City Nights event. That'll be here at the Kern McGee Center. We are looking forward to seeing you out here. Again, chili cook-off, music, wine, beer, food, social, fun. Come out, be a part of it. I promise you, if you have not come out to one of our Ridgecrest City events, come out to it, you will be surprised, you will be shocked, and I believe you'll go home and tell your friends, because we have put a lot of effort in making these great events for our community, and the number of new food vendors that are coming is always fantastic and brings new opportunities to this community. I will personally say that when my wife heard that Kern River Brewery was coming, I think that was the straw that finally said, "Okay, we're going." So, and then I want to go ahead and address one other big issue for the entire community, and that is the Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. We all are aware of the decisions that had to be made with labor and delivery. We're all aware of the decisions that are being made for the financial benefit of ensuring that our hospital continues to have the services that our citizens expect and need for this community. I want to make one thing abundantly clear to this community. Although you may not be seeing headlines, although you may not be seeing 1,000 things populated to you every minute about this problem, I can give you every assurance that every level of government, from the city, county, state, federal, military, and even all of the ancillary pieces that the hospital has to be available, are all working in conjunction to try and find resolution for this hospital. We are cognitively aware of how critically important all of the services that this hospital provides this community and all of our surrounding communities is. We are a regional hospital. I never want to hear that somebody had an accident on Highway 395 and their life could have been saved, but the regional hospital is not there. Mr. Gorman, you created a sticker set many years ago, and still have, about the deadliest highway in the United States, and it runs directly adjacent to our community. The idea that we ever should be in a position to not have the hospital services that this community expects, this base expects, and that ensures that all of the critical pieces of our mission at China Lake, as well as our citizens of this community have available to them, is of absolute importance, and I promise every single citizen that we are working in conjunction with every single one of these agencies to ensure that that is happening. I will stress this in this way. I have a day job. I have a part-time job that serves as mayor. For the month of February, I haven't had a part-time job. For the first week in March, when I'm in DC, I will not have a part-time job. I will wear the soles off of my shoes advocating for this community. And I won't be alone. And we will continue to advocate, and we will continue to press, because this is a critical issue, and we want our citizens to hear, we are committed to this fight, we are committed to ensuring the Ridgecrest Regional Hospital has the resources it needs to continue to serve this community as it has for the past 80 years? 60 years? I don't know when the hospital was established, 80 years? I go back to Drummond, because the hospital was here when the city set up, and so I'm going to go all the way back to Drummond, and that's 46, so I'm going to say close to 80 years. We're going to make sure it's there, and that's our commitment to the citizens, and I just want to make sure that I say that very clearly for you. Thank you to everyone who has offered their support. We are going to come to you at some day and say, "We need you to become our vocal advocates." We need you to pick up the phone. We need you to write an email. We need you to write a letter. I beg of you, when we come to you, that you take this as seriously as we are. And with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening. I hope to see many of you tomorrow at the EOC, and have a great evening. Thank you.